Again in just a moment.
All right, gotta be official. I call this meeting to order, City Council meeting on Tuesday, October 19th. If you would, Ms. Silbri, do the roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilman Delagarza?
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Solis?
Here.
Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Young?
Here.
Councilman Lofgren?
Here.
And Mayor Bocknight?
Here. At this time, if you'll join us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, so please remain standing as we prepare our hearts and minds for tonight's work. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all. Thank you. And just a fair warning, next meeting, we're gonna start the Texas pledge of allegiance, so make sure y'all get your wording studied, ready to go.
They need a new slide too for the flag?
Yes.
We're just over there.
So welcome, Mr. Garza, do you have any announcements and/or reminders?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We do have a couple of announcements for this evening. For those announcements, I'm gonna ask Chief Fox to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Just two big announcements the city's hosting in the coming weeks. This week, actually, on Wednesday, we'll be hosting our Second Annual Flu Clinic for Vulnerable Populations. That'll be in Queen City Park from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. No qualification necessary this year, so this is for any age six months and older. So free flu clinics for vulnerable populations, Queen City Park tomorrow, starting at 10:00 a.m. And later, first part of actually November, we'll be hosting our 150th celebration for the Victoria Fire Department, going all the way back to 1871. So we're gonna have a great event on November the 6th, which is a Saturday from 12:00 to 4:00. It'll be a great family event, a lot of fun things for the kids to do, like a pop-up park, pop-up zoo, a lot of activities, free snow cones, and a lot of historical exhibits, antique fire trucks, antique photos, and things of the Fire Department's history. So we hope the public will come out, and you all have an invitation at the dais for you for that event, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Those are all the announcements we have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Silbri, we have a proclamation and a plaque tonight.
The first proclamation is for Friends of the Victoria Public Library proclamation honoring their 50th anniversary. Whereas the city of Victoria has enjoyed a rich tradition of supporting library services since the mid-1850s through the Victoria's Literary Society and the Bronte Literary Society. Whereas the Friends of the Victoria Public Library, founded on July 27, 1971, have carried this tradition for 50 years through its volunteerism, advocacy, and financial support to the Victoria Public Library. Whereas the Friends of the Victoria Public Library believe the library is the cornerstone of our community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and literacy. Whereas the Friends of the Victoria Public Library understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and has implemented tri-annual book sales since 1971 to provide funding for critical library programs and services, such as the Victoria Public Library Summer Reading Program. Whereas the Friends of the Victoria Public Library have volunteered tens of thousands of hours, hosted world-renowned authors, and maintained hundreds of members to foster a love of the library, literacy in all forms, and reading in support of our librarian staff. Whereas the city of Victoria wishes to thank the Friends of the Victoria Public Library on their ongoing contributions to the library and looks forward to its continued efforts to support literacy programs and resources within our community. Now therefore I, Jeff Bocknight, Mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do proclaim October 17th through 23rd, 2021, to be Friends of the Victoria Public Library in Victoria, Texas, and urge everyone to join the Friends of the Victoria Public Library during this very special anniversary year.
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Diana Sneed, and I'm the current president of the Friends of the Library, and I just wanted to say that 50 years ago, a group of like-minded individuals came together to form the first Friends of the Library right here in Victoria, and their mission was to advocate and support the library. Fast forward 50 years, we still have a strong group, 318 currently, that are providing this advocacy and support to our library. Even through the toughest of times, through the pandemic, the library was still offering programs and services to the community to promote literacy and engage the community through this most difficult time. Since May of this year, we held our first book sale after the pandemic. We were able to donate over 480 hours since then to the library and have supported, provided financial support for over 75 projects for people of all ages. So I encourage everyone to go to the library, take part in all the wonderful activities they have there, and become a member of the Friends. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you all for y'all's service and y'all's promoting of the library. Much appreciate it.
The next proclamation is for National Pharmacy Week. Whereas pharmacists are experts in the successful use of today's complex medications, and whereas patients in hospitals and outpatient clinics receive better care when pharmacists are directly involved in medication management decisions, and whereas pharmacist's direct involvement in patient care helps reduce unnecessary costs and burden on the health system, and whereas the pharmacists and pharmacy technicians practicing in the acute, the ambulatory care, and the retail pharmacy settings of Victoria, Texas, contribute to the health and well-being of our citizens. And whereas the American Society of Health System Pharmacists and the Texas Pharmacy Association have declared October 17th through 23rd, 2021's Pharmacy Week. Now therefore I, Jeff Bocknight, Mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do officially declare October 17th through 23rd, 2021, as the National Pharmacy Week. This proclamation was requested by Ricky Lenz, and he was unable to attend tonight's meeting due to his work schedule, but asked to thank everyone for honoring their profession. And last but not least, we have a presentation of a plaque to some outgoing board or commission members. So the council would like to recognize Chip Dents for his service on the Food Establishments Appeals Board. Mr. Dents has served on the board since its creation in 2003. Mr. Dents, the city of Victoria appreciates your willingness to serve your community, and presents you this plaque in appreciation of your time and service, sir. One more plaque presentation would be for former council member Tom Halapaska. He too has served on the Food Establishment Appeals Board since its creation in 2003, and we do appreciate his willingness to serve the community. And we will be presenting him his plaque at a later date. He was unable to attend tonight, but did ask that I express his thanks for the recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Silbri. Now we have items from council. Anybody like to kick it off? Go ahead.
I have two items. Could we raise the speed limit on Placido Benavides to 40 miles an hour from 35? Nobody goes 35. Nobody goes 40, actually, but 40 would be a better speed limit. There's not any, there's only two streets off of Placido Benavides. Could we look into that, please?
We can look into it. It would require, obviously, as you know, a speed study, but we can look into that.
The second thing is, I thought that we were opening up applications for the Citizens Academy?
Yes, sir.
You might want to tell everybody about that? The people out there on TV land?
On TV land? All right. So today, with our newsletter, we did announce that the application for Citizens Academy is opening up. That we are shifting it from eight sessions to four sessions, and they'll be during the day, and they'll start on January 13th. People can visit, residents can visit our website where they can directly link to the application. We will only be accepting 20 applicants or participants, I should say. And as you know, Citizens Academy is one of three public academies that we offer. We offer a police academy and a fire academy as well. And as you know, we recognize individuals that participate in all three. But this is the one that tackles issues associated with our governance structure, finances, economic development, public works, public safety. And it's really a good program for residents to really understand what we do day in and day out. And as some of you know, serves as a good foundation for residents to become more involved with our boards and commissions, and ultimately maybe even run for office. So it's a very successful program. Ashley and her team have done a great job of revamping that program over the course of the last two years, and that continues. And so we definitely encourage our residents to visit our website to find more information about it and submit their application. And again, that program begins in January and will be spread out over four sessions this time.
Thank you. Dr. Young?
Hello, good.
Ms. Scott?
Mr. Crocker?
Okay, so I have one listed, speed hump policy, just so we could discuss it. I believe everybody's received a copy of it. I don't know if everybody's had the time to look through it. I do have a couple of items that I, that fall under step-two eligibility that I thought would be good if we discussed.
If I could interrupt for just a sec?
Yes, ma'am.
For the folks in TV land, would you explain a speed hump as compared to a speed bump?
Okay.
We do have, we do have the same few slides that we went over at the workshop. If council thinks it's appropriate, Ken, to kind of run through that quickly?
You bet.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna go through, and I'll answer your question in here. There we go. What are speed humps? They're a raised area in the street to reduce speed. They're typically 12-foot long, and kind of judge that, it's 12-foot wide if you really want to think about it. They're 12-foot long. A speed bump are typically a foot wide, and they're six inches high. Those are done mostly, almost invariably, in private property to slow traffic down, like at shopping malls, stores, and things like that. A speed hump is to reduce the speed. They're edge-to-edge, three to four inches high, where a speed bump may be six inches high. And those are abrupt in nature. These are, again, it's the width that makes the difference. Where? Speed humps typically only in residential. They're placed on streets with a quarter-mile continuous length, meaning that the street is at least a quarter mile long. It may have side streets coming into it, which you wouldn't put the speed hump at the sides, at the intersection, but it could be away from that. But you want them on a street that's long enough. Regulatory speed limit of 30 miles an hour, which is residential, and not located at driveways or intersections. And on those driveway things, it could be difficult if you've got a neighborhood with narrow lots and wider driveways. Things to consider. Petition, these are typical standards. I've looked at a lot of speed hump policies across the state and across the nation, and they're pretty consistent with two-thirds of the households where property butts the streets is in favor of it, and that's done through a petition. Minimum, 85th percentile of the speed is 35 or above. That's in some of them. Some of them don't even have a speed limit designation. They just, if it's a request, they get two-thirds. But a lot of them, most of them do have a speed, you know, do a speed study, determine is speeding really an issue? Traffic count of at least 500 vehicles a day. Multiple speed humps, you would want on a long stretch of a street. Funding, again, you go with the contractor. We don't have any contractors that do hot mix in Victoria. So what we'd suggest is if we have a lot of them, is to hire somebody where we can get bigger bang for the buck as they install them. And in-house, if we had just a few here and there, we could do those in-house. Takes about two days to install. And there's also striping and signage involved with speed humps. And that's it for the presentation.
Do you have an estimated cost per speed hump?
Material-wise, you're looking at probably $1,000. But bringing a contractor down with time labor, you're looking at probably $4,000 or $5,000 if you can get a lot of them. They're done by hand typically. It's all hand-wrecked, hand-dumped, and there's no machine that just actually lays it.
And does that include signage and striping?
The signage and striping, say $400 a sign, which would be at least a sign at the speed hump, maybe one before to advance it, and then the striping could be done in-house for minimal. We've got that availability with the striping.
I have four things I want to bring up about this.
Sure.
I brought up at a previous meeting that would be nice if we could lower the speed limits to 25, and Texas law won't allow it, won't allow that. I would like Victoria to ask the, our state legislatures at the next session to try and get something through. It's been proposed before and never got to the floor. The other thing is, I think we need to ask, Mayor Pro Tim Solis made a point, and I was gonna make the point, she didn't make it. When we went to the animal control thing, a lot of people were very complimentary of the city that we wanted their opinion. I think we should get the opinion of where, from citizens, of where this is needed, where we have a traffic problem, a speed problem. We know about some, but we may not know all of them.
But does that not already be addressed in the petition portion of this?
It is, it is, but let me get my next two points. The last point is, I think you should try stop signs. Now, somebody's gonna say, no, you can't do that because people, you know, they're not used to the stop signs. But I'll give you an example. Queen's Way runs off of Salem Road into Castle Hills. There are stop signs almost every two streets, okay? Blythe Road, there are two streets that run into Blythe Road. If you put two stop signs on there, you would slow down the traffic. You would also probably, some of the traffic would get off of Blythe Road. And that's the same thing would happen with a speed bump. So I think you need to look at stop signs. Now, they're not always gonna work, I understand that. But they're a lot cheaper. If you put them up, you can always remove them.
But doesn't the traffic code dictate when a stop sign needs to be placed?
I don't know. Somebody should tell me that. I don't think so, because there was a stop sign appeared across the street from my house the other day, and I asked the city engineer, how did that happen? And he told me that my neighbor hadn't requested it.
You want me to address that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Just don't dig yourself into a bigger hole.
Or to stop street. Stop signs by MUTCD are not, should not be used for speed control. It's very specific in the manual, it's the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And the reason that is in there is you don't want to have a driver driving down a street that's, that is a through street. And yes, there are some. Queen's Way would be one that's possible, could go either way. But you don't want to drive down a street that is typically, has the larger volume, and just put up a random stop sign. It's, it's an unexpected driver, something that they're not gonna expect. And that goes back into the MUTCD as far as safety. You don't want to put something up in a roadway or in a traffic thing that is gonna be unexpected or possible cause danger to the other, you know, drivers that are around there. The incident at Maudeville, which-
Would a speed hump cause be, would you expect a speed hump if you went down a road all of a sudden? Any more than a stop sign?
Those are speed reductions. The stop sign is actually, you are stopping traffic. So it's, it's been reviewed by MUTCD. They're looking, they, they do, they don't recommend them, but they're in the manual.
I'm not recommending it just for speed control. I'm recommending it to discourage people to use it as a cut-through. Because if it takes more time to go down a street, I'm less likely to cut through that neighborhood. I'm not, yes, it will slow people down because they got to stop at the stop sign. It's not any different than if you put a speed hump there. That would be unexpected, too. If I went down Blythe Road, for example, at 30 miles an hour, and all of a sudden there's a speed hump, it wouldn't be much different than a stop sign. I think stop signs should be tried in certain instances. They're a lot cheaper, they can be removed. You can see if they change the traffic pattern very easily.
I understand, but we, as, as, as a city engineer, and looking at that manual, and look, and reviewing those, we got to be real careful about where those go, because again, if it's unexpected, and it's a through street that people have been driving on, and they all of a sudden see a stop sign, whether it's flashing or, or big and large, it is an unexpected driver experience, and that can lead to accidents, you know, they don't see it, they run it, or they don't expect it. And that's why it is very well spelled out, it should not be used for speed control.
One of the things that would be helpful as part of this conversation is if we as staff can get direction slash consensus from council on what's the problem statement that we're trying to solve with any of this? Because the solution will look different depending on what that problem statement is. If the problem statement is trying to simply reduce speed, well then obviously those solutions are gonna range from lowering the speed limit to potential speed humps, you know, and other things. If the problem statement is trying to reduce the volume of vehicles using a street as a cut-through, that's a completely different set of potential solutions to address that problem. Our understanding, leading up to today's conversation, was that the problem statement was the first, which was trying to reduce the speed of vehicles driving through streets in our neighborhood. That might, they might, and it could be for a slightly different reason. It could be because they're cutting through, cutting through. It could just be, you know, that neighbor with the Camaro, you know, that's going down the street. So it would be helpful for us to get some of that direction as well.
To me, it's for this reduction in speed, because if you're gonna try and stop the cut-through on some of these roads, I don't believe that that's gonna work. Short of gating it off and making the residents buy the street from the city and maintain it from here on after, it's, it's still a public thoroughfare. And I don't think that you're gonna change the traffic patterns that people use to stay off of major thoroughfares. Or if you take Country Club Drive in Spring Creek, there's really no way to get to Navarro except for going to the light at Mockingbird or all the way down to the Loop. There's no other way. So it just becomes a natural cut-through, especially with HEB there. It happened when, when Kmart started, and when HEB was where, in the old location. It was used that way, but everybody took a right when they came off of Spring Creek. So there's, there's natural traffic flow that I don't see that we're gonna be able to solve with any type of speed hump or other type of policy without putting in other roads or gating things, or making them one-way, or whatever the case may be. I think it creates a much larger solution set if that's the problem y'all want to go after. For me, it was reduction in speed.
Well, and I think we should have a policy for speed humps. But we should look at every situation and see, is there another way that we could solve the situation? Because it's not necessarily the speed. I'll give you an example. Guy Grant used to be a cut-through because it was to avoid the school zone. The road is too rough now, plus there's a median on Navarro, so we don't have as much traffic anymore. You can't cut through. So I mean, some, I think every situation needs to be looked at. I think we need to have this option, but sometimes one stop sign. Like if I was gonna fix Guy Grant, I wouldn't put in a speed hump. I put one stop sign in the middle of Guy Grant, I mean, in King Arthur, and it would solve the problem. People wouldn't cut through. It'd be quicker to go through the school zone. So I think every situation, this needs to look, we need to have this policy. I agree with that. But we need to look at every situation, and we need to know, we know some situations, but we need to ask the citizens out there if there's some other situations that we don't know about.
Yeah, I agree that it's just another tool that we have in terms of controlling speed and that. And I think we rely on our engineers and the data and the studies that says, this is the best tool for this specific purpose in this specific location, whereas another tool may be better suited to a different location. So I, you know, I agree that the, the policy should be in place to give us an alternative anyway. Once we know a little bit more about it, I think, I think we all wanted to get additional information. But, you know, if we have it, then we need to say, okay, where do we utilize it best?
Mr. Gill, do you have a feel for traffic counts through these residential areas now? Would any, any of them qualify at the, you know, what we have in there right now, 500 vehicles? And then 85th percentile seems high. If I'm living in a neighborhood, I'd be terrified if 85% of the vehicles are speeding.
That, and that's one of the issues, that's one of the areas to discuss. The, the speed humps, I can think of a few streets that that, there might actually be some exceeding of traffic. But as far as volume, there are some streets, and I'll just throw this one out, Mesquite, that goes between Navarro and Laurent. It's a straight shot. And that's one that, you know, it's, it's expected, it's wide, and I would venture to guess that you could take a speed, you know, check the speeds. The volume definitely, I bet, is over 500. But there are some streets. You mentioned Guy Grant. That doesn't classify as a residential street. So we got to look, remember, it's residential only, and that's a key point to make, that some of those streets, you're right, may not have the 500 cars, and that's why a lot of the cities will do a speed study that counts the vehicles and then verifies that the speeds are above 30 to a significant amount.
It was King Arthur I was talking about.
Right. That's true. You're right, you're right. It was King Arthur.
Mr. Gill, I noticed in the, the draft policy that there was a discussion of curb and gutter streets versus, I guess, open ditch streets. What's the difference in construction of a speed hump on, on those two different types?
It's, it's easier on curb and gutter, because you have a defined space with, with open, open ditch section. You put it out so far, and there's, you got to get it to the edge, and that's, that's gonna be hard to build. It can be done. It's just, you don't want those cars going off, trying to miss the speed hump and going off into the ditch roadway. They're done. I, I'm not gonna say that they're not.
Does it change either your, your initial cost or your maintenance cost?
No, it wouldn't, wouldn't change it. They're narrower. The, the open ditch sections are typically narrower. So they change the cost a little bit on materials.
When you, you did a study on Blythe Road before. Did it meet the 500 criteria?
I believe it did. I'd have to go back and look at that.
It was the speed, it was the speed thing that it didn't meet?
I'd have, I'd honestly have to go back. I've got that information in my office. I know I've seen it. But I haven't, I did not take a specific look at it.
Well, I don't want to take up too much more time on this specific topic. Are y'all okay if we continue working on it? I'd say if there's any comments that you want to make on this, Mr. Garza would be okay collecting them?
Absolutely.
And then we can look at a proposed set of changes, maybe the- And then we can look at a proposed set of changes maybe the next time, but-
Put in favor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I like the fact that the putting in the speed hump is originated by the folks that live on that street. It's not something that the city's going to randomly go out and say, oh, let's put a speed hump here. But it's something that is driven by the residents asking for it. And I think that's important to stress.
We could though. So the city could always put one in, initiate is probably the better word. The city can initiate, let's look at having a speed hump here. But there's ways around that, but you're right. It's kind of centered around residents being supportive of it, which you would have to get too.
Prior to the city just doing that themselves, I would hope that we would ask those residents anyway-
Right.
And get a thumbs up.
I guess my point is that the city can initiate the process too.
Okay.
Follow the same process, but we could initiate it as well.
And that process does involve the citizens being aware of it.
Right.
So there won't be an asphalt truck outside anybody's house tomorrow.
Right. All right, great. Thank y'all for the discussion. Anybody else have any items from council? None. Then we'll go into citizens communication. And I have Mr. Von der Aa.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and mayor and mayor pro tem. There's a lot of legal dumping where I live. They're not donating this stuff to charities as a charity box. They're illegally dumping trash. There's three mattresses. They dump beer cans, throw masks. We have people using drugs illegally there. And it just continues and continues. I saw one person dump some legal stuff at someone's trailer house and within an hour I took care of it. I just called his probation officer and within an hour she called him and he took care of it. But I was just wondering if code enforcement could put like some motion detectors and try to solve the problem? Or maybe some police could patrol it and maybe arrest someone or give them a ticket? There's always people over there using drugs. There's, so it's at Family Dollar at 20, it's on North Ben Jordan, 2906 North Ben Jordan, East North Street, bis exit. There's a firefighter with a nice brick home there. There's a church across the street. I wish someone could do something. This is nothing new. This has been going on the last three years. And the manager of Family Dollar, he's done nothing so far, you know? And it continues to get worse and worse. And there's actually more pictures, but that's just, you know, the starting of the problem. But I was hoping maybe someone could help with that. And thanks for Animal Control for giving me dog traps for about three years. I can't remember all the dogs they've came and caught at the trailer park, you know? Thanks and have a good day. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good to see you. Dr. Shook, good to see you. And we respectfully request that you keep it to three minutes if possible.
Let's see, three minutes, yes. Bob Shook, I live in Victoria and have 64 years after 33 years behind lecterns in colleges and universities. And I wanted to ask, Mr. Gush, did you decide to give the members a copy of this new state law?
I don't know which state law you're referring to.
Well, the one I spoke to your secretary about, she said she would download it, have you read it. They don't have a copy, in other words. Okay. Well, three minutes is not going to work, is it, by any means? We have here a new state law. It's called House Bill 2497. And I think he'll be able to provide you, Mr. Gush, with copies. That's just the number. The name of the bill for you and me is Project 1836. I have made a few notes, I'm watching the clock, made a few notes from it. I'll make no attempt to read it. It is comprehensive. It is meant to apply to all city, county, Victoria Independent School Districts and their agencies. So it's comprehensive in terms of whom is affected by it. Did I say county as well as city? In special, specific terms, as far as the city is concerned, it's going to have a major effect on the tourist program. On the main street program. And the Chamber of Commerce, by the way, but that's not your problem. I'm sorry, I can't help you with Navarro Street. Is my time up?
Yes, sir.
It is.
Yes, sir. We'll take a look at that HB 2497 from the regular session.
It's going to be important to see.
It's very interesting.
Sorry, I can't help you with Poor Farm Road. That's Navarro Street.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Shook. Also have tonight, Dr. Bob Glenn from University of Houston, Victoria. Welcome.
Mayor Bachnight, members of the council. I'll be very brief. I know you have a busy agenda, but I would be remiss if I didn't come on this night when you're going to be taking the final vote on the Ben Wilson Project. To express the appreciation and thanks to the university. If you've been on our campus recently, you see that we are beginning to develop a true campus feel. Ben Wilson Project will complete that and allow us to really begin to have a greater and greater impact on this area. And it literally could not be done without your cooperation. We appreciate very much you're willing to partner with us and we pledge that we will be good partners. It has taken a while. I think we started this about five years ago, but it won't take another five years before we're finished. And I really appreciate all that you've done to make it possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, Dr. So that's it for citizens communication. I don't have any other notices. So we will close citizens communication and go into items with public hearings. Item C1, please.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending and re-adopting Chapter 4 of the City Code of Ordinances relating to animals and fowl.
Thank you. Mr. Gush has a short presentation for us.
Yes, sir, mayor and council. And just for your information, I just downloaded the bill Dr. Shook was referring to and I have emailed it to each of your accounts so that you will be able to refer to it later. Tonight, we're here for the second reading of the readoption of the city's animal code. It is my goal tonight to focus on the things that we are, that came up at the last meeting that need further clarification or discussion rather than the entire code as a whole. Just remember where we are at this point. We are now at the second, the second reading and public hearing of this ordinance, but we certainly have had a lot of ground covered leading up to this point. There is one note I want to make about the November 2nd final reading that'll be coming up in a couple of weeks. And that is that Senate Bill 5, which is the bill that we, going back history, remember, it has to do with tethering dogs. We included it in our ordinance. The governor then vetoed it. The governor then asked for it to be brought back. It has now, Senate Bill 5 passed both the House and the Senate. The legislature adjourned today after sending that bill to the governor. That bill might be signed into state law before we meet for the third reading of this ordinance. If so, I will bring you an amendment to strike that out of our code so that we will not be duplicating state law at that point. All right? Just a note for future. Other than that, I'm hoping that we can finalize all of the textual decisions tonight so that on third reading, we do not currently plan to have a public hearing on that night. Hopefully, the third reading is just an adoption of what we have decided at this point. But there is still a chance to make revisions on third reading if you desire.
Tell us.
Yes, ma'am.
That tethering rule is not going to be in tonight's changes, right?
That is correct. It is not in tonight's changes because it's still up in the air at the state level. Animal Control has asked that we do include that in our local code in case it does not pass at the state level. But if it does pass at the state level, I'm going to strip it out so that we're not simply duplicating state law.
Okay.
All right. All right. At the last meeting, remember we had a discussion about the change to require animals that are impounded to be held at least five business days? And remember that the Animal Control, the health director from the county discussed the impact that would have on the operations at Animal Control, suggesting that they would handle those impacts by switching to a managed intake process. At that meeting, there was no motion by council to change or move away from my recommendation. However, there was a discussion, a request from Dr. Young to go over the survey results that led to this recommendation. And so I've brought that data back here for your consideration. You can see this is question two from the survey. And 51.1% of the respondents were interested in five business days being the correct amount. The small green bar is three calendar days. That was our original recommendation. The small blue bar, three business days, is what was in our prior code. But my recommendation is based on that blue, light blue bar, five business days. And I just put that out there and see if there is any further comments from council on that discussion point.
I just wanted to add, so if it's 51% for five, you have two weeks at 7.3 and we don't know what other, other could have been even longer. So certainly, less than five days was a very small percentage.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I would like to see this as three days, only because I think we do more harm by moving it to five days in the operations of the Animal Control Department. They are not going to be able to handle that extra amount of dogs. And let me, I just spoke to them about how this happens and they said after the three business days now, that's when another shelter would come over and look at the animals that have cleared that three day hurdle and become possession of the county. And at that time, they can take the animal, but there's another few days it takes to actually get the animal transferred out. So in essence, it's, they said at least a week, probably five business days, six business days before that animal leaves to go to another shelter. Or they have some determination from that shelter and in case they have to put the animal down. So I think that there's, I know it doesn't allow more time for the owner of the pet to come claim their animal. But that window's just going to get pushed further and they don't have the capacity to keep those, that many animals. And I think it's a better route if we try to work with the county to determine if there's some way to increase capacity at the Animal Control in the meantime, knowing that it's an issue, as opposed to just throwing this in the county's lap and saying, y'all deal with it now.
Are you talking about three calendar days or three business days?
Three business days.
Business days?
Yes.
Because our original draft was three-
Calendar.
Calendar days.
The current code is three working days, business days, the same thing. And our recommendation initially was to change that to calendar days. That clearly was a mistaken idea on our part.
But I just, I think-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
In being a good partner with the county, I think it's fair to give them some time to work through some of their issues on capacity and not just dump it in their lap and create a whole mess for them.
I agree. I agree. Now, if they extend their hours, then we can come back and revisit it.
I would like to know what the, and it's not a conversation for us up here to have, certainly because we don't have much bearing on it other than we're county taxpayers, but what's the end game and what's their solution to this, is what I would like to know. I mean, this is a problem that really does ultimately fall in their lap, but I think we would all like to know what is the end game? How do they, they meet the demands of the citizens and the pets and the animals here in the county? We're not really in control of that. I get that.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Because what I heard, and perhaps I heard wrong, but would like clarification, was that they don't have permanent capacity, but they do have the ability to make temporary capacity as needed. So, you know, I don't know what's involved in making that temporary capacity. I don't know how often they're completely full. But, you know, if this is going to become an issue on the three days, five days, I'd like to know a little bit more about that actual situation before making that decision.
Well, also, if we make the other changes that I think are discussed about, if animals are being impounded, that they could be impounded at a vet, I'm just curious whether that would give them some capacity as well. And so-
Fair point.
But Mr. Gonzalez said last time that they're already holding them five days.
From, in the, that's what I was trying to-
And they have room-
And why and everything else.
I think the citizens have spoken. Five business days is what it should be.
Two things I'll touch on, Dave Gonzalez, Public Health Director. We're prepared to, you know, adapt our processes to what, you know, council obviously would like to go with. So, I mean, the managed intake was in response to the five days, so we are, you know, prepared to do that. You know, as far as for the most case, we try to do, there is a little more than three days hold on that. I brought Jose up here to kind of touch on that. But we're happy to, again, adapt processes to, you know, whatever council would like to go with.
So in, Mr. Gonzalez, in your opinion, if we go with the five days, is it going to lengthen response times?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, there's no question about that.
Five days, five business days. The citizens have spoken.
And it will lengthen response times because you don't have a place to keep the animals if you have to pick them up?
It'll just be the longer holds, yes, ma'am. It'll be longer holds, the longer stays within the facility. And then it'll cause essentially backlog in the call volume. That is our primary concern with that.
The last time you were here, you said that you were already holding five days. And then you have the shelters come in.
So, again, Jose kind of touched on the process as far as from the three days-
There's nothing going to change.
No, there is going to be a change. Because yes, we do currently hold for five days. That's what our average length of stay is. But once you move that hold period to five days, you're now going to extend out their average length of stay, most likely somewhere between 10 to 12 days. Because the average length of stay for us for five days, that includes the time for another facility to come in, another rescue to come in, view the animals, get the animals out. This also, again, moving to a five day is also going to push back the time before the animal can even have a chance to be adopted. So if we put that at five days, a citizen cannot come in and adopt an animal from our facility till after that fifth day is up. So you still have to, you're still going to have to hold even longer to even give them an opportunity to be adopted. That's where our concern is, is that we are holding it a five day currently. That's about the average length of stay. Moving it to a five day stray hold, you're going to push it to a 10 to 12 day hold in total in our facility. So it's really going to extend out the amount of time that animal is there. And again, it's also going to take longer before they're even available for adoption through our facility as well.
But that's y'all's choice for doing that. That's just y'all's procedure. That's just the way y'all do it, though.
No, but once you, once you make the ordinance that says they have to be held for five days, that's a five day stray hold. You cannot adopt that animal out till after the fifth day. Because that's what you're saying, is you're giving a citizen five days to come and claim their animal. So you can't process an adoption, you can't do anything with that animal till after that fifth day is up.
And it takes another 10, 10 days to-
It potentially could. I mean, we're already holding it a three day and we're already having an average length of stay of five, you're going to extend out that amount of time that the animal's going to be there. I mean, that's just, that's what's going to happen. Because you have to give that time for those other processes to take place. You have to allow time for rescues to come in. You have to allow time for citizens to come in and to adopt. So- So those animals have to be given that opportunity. And if not, then we're, that's like saying we're going to just, you know, wind up having to euthanize everything at the end of the fifth day, which we don't want to do.
I don't think you're saying that. And we're not saying that either.
Well, I'm not either, but I mean, we're also talking about what do we do with the animals that are waiting to be brought in when the facility is full from the animals we're holding for five days.
And thinking of that you're doing now after three days.
Yeah, sometimes that results unfortunately into the euthanasia of animals that haven't been claimed within three days. Yes.
That's why we want to move it to five business days.
Again, that's the council's choice. If you choose to do so, that's, we'll be prepared to make the necessary changes to adapt to that.
To me, this isn't a decision on number of days before an animal gets euthanized. It's the number of days before the county can take possession to try and place the animal. They can't place the animal at all. If it's a responsible pet owner, I would expect they could make it within three business days to claim their animal. What are the extra two days going to give the pet owner? Because that's what we're talking about. We're giving extra days to the pet owner.
What's wrong with that?
Because of the downstream consequences, and I don't know that this question really lays out the entire issue because it's, when you look at it, it says becomes the full owner, Animal Control becomes the full owner of the animal, and it's responsible for disposition. So depends on how you think of the word disposition. Is that euthanasia? Could be. Is it finding another home for the animal? But all those options are still there. All I'm saying is, we're going to have longer response times. We're going to create more problems going forward if we go with the five business days. And all we're doing is saying to what should be a responsible pet owner, you have two extra days to come get your animal. I don't.
Somebody gave an example of someone being in an accident and in a wreck. The last time we had this conversation, they could be in the hospital three or four days. And so they get out on the fourth or fifth day, the county has chosen to euthanize the animal because the three days is up.
They could be in the hospital for six days. Are you going to expend, I mean, you have to draw the line somewhere. Most responsible pet owners would call right away, where's, I want my pet back. If you have to wait, if you call three days before you go to call about your pet, I wonder about you to begin with.
I have a question.
What if you weren't in town?
Then somebody should be watching your pet.
I'm wondering about bifurcating this, and, you know, it's kind of a, there's an emotional issue in here as well as a practical issue. And I like the idea that Animal Control takes control of the animal and can have other folks come and adopt it after the three days, which keeps them working. I think what people are reacting to is we don't want the animal euthanized after three days. People were more comfortable with five. And I'm wondering whether that's workable, that it be that they hold it for three days before it becomes their property that they can dispose of, but that they can't euthanize it for another two. Is that at all workable?
If you look at the language of that section, it is proposed to read, animals impounded shall be kept for not less than five days unless earlier reclaimed by their owners. It does not say what needs to be done. It is possible that we could craft language that says that after three days, the animal is available, is to be made available for adoption, and after, you know, after five days. Or perhaps we would say that the county becomes full owner after three days, so long as they don't euthanize until five. But at that point, what are you doing during that fourth and fifth day? Now the county is the owner of the dog, and if the person comes to reclaim the dog, it's not their dog anymore.
Well, but.
They can adopt it.
They can adopt it.
They can go through the adoption process. That's a very good idea. So perhaps there's some exploration that could be done on that front.
Can I ask my question now?
Please.
Okay. Since we up here in the DIs don't understand how the process is, when you ask this question to the public, how are they supposed to know the process? And then why were they questioning for the same five days? Because they didn't know the process. We're questioning why five days because we don't understand. So I think when you ask the question in the survey, people misunderstood, and they thought, okay, three days, boom, my dog is dead. But it's not. You're explaining it different now. So for clarification purposes, I expect some clarification to the question to address the five days instead of just saying, okay, it's three days, boom, you're dead. Okay? I think that's what's happening right here, and we're all getting kind of emotional and stuff when we didn't, I didn't understand it was going to be three days and then five days and then, you know, all we heard was what the people talked about at the town hall meeting, okay? And they were emotional, just like we are getting right here. So I think that we need to, if you're going to go with the five days or three days, whatever, explain why the three days is important versus the five days. And, you know, something has to be done because this is, we're going round and round, and we're never going to get to the answer.
And I think part of what weighed in on five days versus three days, and rightfully so, were there were also complaints about hours. And that's where I'm looking at it from the standpoint that folks are saying, hey, if you're only going to have limited hours, and I can only come when I'm at work, I'm going to have to make arrangements. I'm not opposed to giving folks that extra two days to make those arrangements to be able to get there to save their pet. I mean, that, if we're going to, if we're going to reduce the number of days and stay with limited hours, I can understand answers that say, hey, five days. And, you know, I think it's something we need to think about. I mean, I think that's a real thing, that people have to have that ability and have to have time to be able to accommodate those reduced hours with their own work hours.
I can't remember, didn't the county discuss that yesterday? They pulled forward the, a hiring of another person out there so that they could go to extended hours?
We were moving the hire that was going to start January 1 to November 11 because we are short right now. We're also going to discuss at some point, hopefully extending hours one day a week and then possibly Saturdays as well, but that would be for adoptions only and reclaims.
Is there a procedure with a phone? I mean, if I call and say, little Sparky's been missing, and I'm calling to see whether you've got little Sparky, this is what he looks like, and you say, yes, we've got little Sparky, and I say, I can't get there for four days, what? I mean, would you say, sorry, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, but.
No, no. We actually have had several people that call, and we work with those citizens that are, that have those issues. We work with them any way we can to get their pets back to them. So it's not, I mean, anybody who calls and says, I think my animal's there, we do encourage them to come in, which we do know the limited hours do sometimes affect that. We do, of course, there is a website that is up that posts everything that's in our facility is available to be seen. We've also, we're always, unlike a lot of county offices, we're open through lunch. I mean, that's one of the great things about us during even your lunch hour, if you're able to come out and take a look, you can come out and look. But anytime someone calls and says their animal's there, we work with them in any way we can to get those pets back to them. Yeah, and we've had, I mean, I think just the other day, someone who called and said, I think my animal's there. It was fixing to be up on its stray hold of its three days, and it was held extra days to make sure they had the ability to come in for their pet.
I have a question for Mr. Gonzalez. You're changing the hours and adding more people. Isn't that going to take county commissioner, court approval?
It did. It got approved Monday.
They already got there, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez, if we stayed with the three business days, is it possible that some of this could be taken care of with Animal Control policy saying, we will not euthanize before the fifth business day that animal has been here? Unless, I mean, I'd have some exceptions in there for, you know, dangerous dog or disease, you know, that y'all have talked about some of those exceptions before.
Yeah, that would be, that's what I'm asking Thomas, if it'd be just policy or if it'd be code as well, and if it would be just city or city-county, total, departmental, I mean, we can absolutely review that for sure. That's something I'm open to, you know, any suggestions that we can do to make things, you know, smoother, more applicable.
I think that would solve the issue in the way the question was asked, right? Three business days to reclaim your pet, and not until the fifth day would it be euthanized. So you still get the five days. Seems like a logical compromise.
Well, that would be six-day euthanized if you get through the five days.
Well, and.
Lawyers can't do that.
If your animal is adopted out in the meantime, I mean, they're going to have records, they're going to know who got the dog, and then you can go and talk to them and sling it out with them, I guess.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. You know, I was just, I was curious to see if there's going to be any issues on that end.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to address Ms. Scott's comment. That has happened in other cities. It has been problematic in other cities where dogs were adopted out, and then you have an ownership lawsuit between two people who say they own a dog. That was actually the genesis behind the idea of shortening the time limit and making it clear that the holidays don't apply. That was why we initially proposed shortening it. Our community doesn't like that idea, and I'm not proposing shortening it, but that has been an issue in other cities.
Mr. De La Gorda, do you find that as a reasonable compromise?
No.
No?
No, I want to stick with the five business days. Citizens of Victoria have spoken. Because all these if, ands, or buts, they probably won't hold up in a court of law if something comes up, all these exceptions. It makes the policy, the procedure harder to understand. The more if, ands, or buts that you put in here, the more confusion there is. It should be cut and dry.
So you want to just take a raise of hands? Who's for cut and dry?
My concern, I don't like the downstream effect that it does. I mean, I certainly prefer the five, but I understand the downstream effect and what it, the effect it has on service to our community, and that greatly concerns me as well. This is a difficult position since we're not necessarily in control of.
Operations.
And the operations and staffing and, you know, capital improvement and building a larger facility. So that's, that's kind of a unique position that we're in.
If I may just interrupt, I didn't want to cut you off. I wanted to let you finish your thought. As a procedural question, have we a motion and a second on the floor? We're just in the discussion phase. So a formal amendment would not be appropriate at this point. Once this report is finished and you have your public hearing, remember that I do have a slate of amendments that I am proposing. This is not one of them. But I just want to point out that a formal amendment and a vote could be taken once this item is on the floor formally.
Okay, we can do it that way.
Yeah, I'm thinking, we have a citizen that comes to us at almost every meeting telling us that, you know, there are stray dogs in his area, and he appreciates Animal Control coming. And what the five days is going to do is he's going to be saying Animal Control hasn't come. That's, I agree with Councilman Young, it's the downstream that concerns me.
All right. Y'all all right? Moving on to the next item, and we'll.
Next item.
Do in motion when it comes time.
The next topic has to do with chicken coops, specifically whether or not the chicken coop should be behind a screening fence. This conversation came up, we were talking about moving chicken coops from front yards, and the question arises regarding bullet C, which is the third lineup for the bottom of this slide, that chicken coops shall be not visible from a public street. Councilwoman Scott requested that we look into screening requirements. And so since the last meeting, I have gone back and looked at the city's code related to fences, both commercial and residential fences. I had a meeting, I sat down with Julie Fulgham, the Director of Development Services, where we talked about the impact of the commercial screening fence regulations and the residential fence regulations. The short version of that story is that we have residential fence requirements already that address some of Ms. Scott's concerns, that is, residential fences cannot be made out of plywood or corrugated steel. So there are standards for what those fences need to be. However, we do not have a residential fence standard that requires those fences to be opaque so that they're not visible. It is legal to use hurricane fences, cyclone fences in the city, nor do we have a height requirement on fences. And so if you were to have a fence requirement added to this, it would be my recommendation that we cross-reference the existing residential fence requirements and include some additional language. And so the proposal that I have in the slate of amendments looks like this. Subsection C would now say that the coop and the run shall each be kept behind a six-foot-high opaque screening fence that meets the requirements of Section 21104, that's the residential fence requirements of this code, or otherwise not visible from a public street. Now, at the risk of making this a contentious discussion, you may read that and think to yourself that if it's behind a fence or not, that accomplishes the same thing as being not visible from a public street. And so there is some room for discussion on that point, but I think this language addresses Ms. Scott's concern. Any questions or comments about that? That is in the slate of amendments. I think that is amendment number one. The second amendment that's being proposed has to do with a question from Mr. Crocker, a discussion about how the nuisance noise ordinances in the city can be used to restrict the noise of chickens. And so I went back and pulled up, I said I would bring back a comprehensive discussion. There are three sections in our city code that deal with noise regulation. The first is conditions and acts that are considered to be public nuisances. The second is sound produced by amplifying devices or musical or entertainment groups. So that's going to be your large stereo equipment or nightclubs. And the third is sound from amplifying devices in vehicles. That's going to be your thumping cars and other loud stereo equipment in cars. The second and third of those probably don't apply to chickens, except maybe on Friday karaoke nights. So let's focus on just the first of those, which says, the following conditions and acts, among others, are hereby declared to be public nuisances. There are 20 items on that list, and item 20 is noise. And the relevant part for this discussion is allowing to be made any noise which would either annoy or disturb a person of normal nervous sensibilities. So if you have chickens in your yard, and they are loud, and they are annoying or disturbing your neighbors, that is a nuisance under our current code, and nuisances are Class C misdemeanors. They can be prosecuted as crimes. And so it is possible that we could use the criminal code, the city code criminally to try to enforce that to encourage people to keep their chickens quiet. Now, please don't ask, how is that going to keep the chicken quiet? Because I think the only answer to that question is, don't have chickens. Nevertheless, from a code standpoint, I think that this does address the requirement that chickens not be so loud as to annoy your neighbors. But I'm glad Mr. Crocker asked the question because you'll notice that this is in section 10-20. That means it's in Chapter 10 of the city code. And the Animal Control Division is charged with enforcing Chapter 4 of the city code, not 10. So if your disturbed neighbor picks up the phone and calls Animal Control because it's chickens making the noise, Animal Control will be correct when they say, there's nothing we can do about that. And I don't think we want to put Animal Control in that position. We've heard from our citizens that they have confidence issues related to Animal Control, and I think that we need to empower Animal Control to be able to respond in those situations. And so I am recommending that we take this language from Chapter 10, update it to modern legal standards, and incorporate it into Chapter 4 by adding it into 4-52, the same place we were just talking about fences, to say that fowls shall be kept in a manor so as to prevent any noise which would unreasonably discomfort or annoy a person of ordinary sensibilities. Is there any questions or discussions about that proposal? All right, moving on. These are much easier than the one I wasn't making a recommendation on.
Just to be clear, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Dogs bark, so that doesn't mean the chickens can't cluck.
Correct.
It's just a level of noise.
That is correct.
But I do want to make that clear because with this ordinance, we are still allowing chickens in the city limits, and.
That is correct, yes. So long as those chickens are not kept in a way to annoy and disturb your neighbors on a regular basis, right? And to be clear, if this were to be used through the criminal process, we are talking about a fine for the owner of the chickens. We would not be talking about eliminating the chickens even at that point.
Thank you.
Would that be in three days or five days?
All right, moving on. This is a proposal, this is the third in the slate of amendments, but this proposal is being brought by Animal Code, so I'll let Chief Animal Officer Jose Flores present this one.
All right, so this one is, this really just brings our dangerous dog regulations for the city into alignment with the county and what the county requires. And this is to, for the owner of a dangerous dog, shy restraint the dangerous dog on a handheld leash no longer than six feet in length and with the muzzle at any time the dog is in a, is not in a secure enclosure and meets a requirement to Section 4-42 of this code. This is essentially, makes it so that that animal has the ability to still be a pet. The owner of a dangerous dog, to them, even though we've deemed it dangerous, it's still their pet. This allows them to still bring their pet out of their enclosure, play with them, take them, they can even take them with them out and about, but they have to have it on that short leash. short leash, and it has to be muzzled. And again, it's really just to allow that owner to still keep this pet as a pet, because that's how they still view their animal.
And who deems the dog dangerous, again?
It can go several different ways. Animal control can do deeming of a dog as dangerous, which at that point, the owner does have the ability to appeal to the municipal court, our determination, or if a complaint is made by a citizen, they can make that complaint directly to municipal court, and then the court would handle the process of deeming it all the way through.
Once a dog bites someone, that doesn't automatically deem them a dangerous dog?
No.
All right, as I said, that's the third of the slate of amendments for tonight. And finally, I want to just talk about the presentation by Mr. Klimist at the last meeting. I wanted to just address his concerns. There were several things that he brought up, and I'm going to try to run through these very quickly. The first had to do with the 822.0422 election. That is a section of state law that says it does not apply in a city of our size unless we choose to elect to be governed by that section, and we have done so in our current code as well as in this proposal. That section allows a citizen to file directly with municipal court if they are the victim of a dangerous dog, if they want the court to determine that a dog is a dangerous dog. They don't have to go to animal control first, they can come directly to municipal court, then municipal court has a hearing to determine whether that dog is dangerous. Mr. Klimist's concern was that if we adopted that section, we were adopting the entirety of the dangerous dog section, and we were able to work through that. The rest of the chapter, 822, regarding dangerous dogs is state law and does apply in a city of our size regardless of whether we've made this election. And so I believe he's satisfied with that description. The second concern he had had to do with the provision that makes it illegal to feed birds or squirrels in the park. What that section actually says is it's illegal to maintain or keep a dangerous or vicious animal, a wild animal, in the city limits as a pet. And I can understand where he misread that section, but if you read it all the way out to the end of that clause, we're talking about keeping wild animals as pets, not feeding wild animals in the park. I believe I was able to alleviate his concerns in that regard as well. I will say here publicly, I also talked to the city prosecutor, Ruby Boone, who's an assistant city attorney in my office, and she assures me she has no desire to prosecute people for feeding ducks, squirrels, or birds. All right. Empoundment for any offense, this is a point that Mr. Klimist made where he's correct. Our code says that an animal in violation of the code can be impounded by animal control, and that that can ultimately lead to euthanasia of that animal. I told him this is an area he and I are simply going to have to disagree, because I do think that impoundment of an animal is an effective method of enforcing our code. I did tell him, however, I would entertain consideration of any exceptions that he wanted to propose to the code, and after giving it some thought, he emailed me back later to say that he thought that this impoundment requirement should only apply in situations where dogs have attacked or bitten a person. Unfortunately, I cannot agree to that exception, because that would not allow us to impound a dog at large. If the dog is simply running through the city and animal control needs to pick up that animal for the animal's safety and to return it back to its owner, we need the ability to impound that. And so I'm just going to have to continue to disagree with Mr. Klimist on this point. Alternative impoundment and euthanasia facilities is an idea that he brought up that I am going to agree with him on. This is a good idea, I think. I do not have an amendment proposing this tonight. I'm interested in getting feedback from council about whether you're interested in us doing some additional work to flesh this idea out. But the concept is this, our code says that if a dog is picked up for a rabies hold, that dog can be held by animal control for the 10 days, or it can be held at a local vet that meets their proper requirements. There's an alternative place to hold the dog. The same is not true if that dog is being pounded because they're a dangerous dog but have not bitten someone. So why don't we create in our code an alternative impoundment mechanism that provides a way for that dog to be held elsewhere if the owner desires and if the owner is willing to pay for it? Likewise, our code does not allow for humane euthanasia to be provided by a licensed veterinarian the way that state law does. So why don't we create a provision in our code that allows an owner of a dog that has been ordered humanely euthanized to take that dog to a vet or some other location and have that vet euthanized at an alternate place other than animal control? That's just a concept. We haven't fleshed it out yet. It would require a lot of work. If council is interested in me pursuing that concept, I would recommend that we appoint a task force that includes animal control, includes some local vets, includes some of our active animal activists community, and we study the issue and bring you back a proposal at another date so that it doesn't hold up the adoption of the rest of the code, considering the holidays would likely be after the new year before we would bring that recommendation back. But I'm interested in your feedback. Is that a concept you want me to pursue?
I'm very interested in that.
Yeah, I would like that looked into, definitely.
Yes.
Okay, seeing a lot of heads around the room, we do not have an amendment on the slate for tonight to consider that, but we will look into it further.
Thomas, would that help alleviate some of the problem that they're having with too many dogs at the pound?
I would think it would have a very small impact, because we're only talking about dogs that are held under a dangerous dog allocation, not strays that have been picked up, okay? So it's probably, right, because if the dog is stray and the owner finds that the animals at animal control, they're just going to come pick it up. They don't have to have any further impoundment at that point, right?
No, I understand.
Okay. Finally, Mr. Klimist brought another great point to us, that excretia includes more than just feces, it includes drool and spit and sweat and urine as well, and we do not require, nor should we require, people to follow around with their dogs and mop up drool behind them. That was not the point of this code, and so I do have an amendment in your slate to change the word excretia to only feces. That being said, that is my slate, and if there are any other questions that you have or that citizens have brought to you, I'm happy to have that discussion at this time.
If you don't have any questions for Mr. Gush at this time, we're going to let him rest his feet for a minute, and we'll open a public hearing. Okay? Okay. So we're going to open a public hearing, and we have Mr. Bernie Klimist Esquire with us tonight.
You're still smiling, I like that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mayor Protem. First and foremost, as the city attorney so aptly pointed out, he called me as soon as the office opened the next day. We met, spent an hour going over suggestions. I don't know that we disagreed as strongly as he thinks. I think we agreed on quite a bit, but we were able to work through several issues. And I'd want to jump into one of the issues that may not have been, as I said, brought to you, since you're weighing the five versus three days. Do remember that Mr. Flores, at the last reading, told each and every one of you, the average response time for an owner to pick up their dog was five to six days. You are literally putting in a whole period half as long as animal control tells you they keep, it takes to get the owners to come in. Secondly, and more, I'll go into this, that if it is a owner surrender, it is three days, and those are the first ones they take back because they can euthanize them. I don't even know where to start on that one, except to say that those are the dogs and the animals that have been living with someone and are able to be domesticated into a good home, probably faster than any of the others. If you, and I understand the backlog, but first of all, if you looked at the Victoria Advocate, which I do every morning, I'm sure they'll be happy to hear that, the commissioners' meeting didn't add a person to animal control. Animal control, they did add it, but they did it because five people, according to them, were out sick, and they needed to accelerate the addition. So it's not that we're getting more help, it's they're just trying to get through a temporary time. That being said, managed, I wanted it right, managed intake is not acceptable in Victoria, Texas. You don't get to say that, "Well, if we have to keep them longer, we're just going to kill the ones that are here to take in others." In case the council isn't aware, the budget for animal control is over $600,000, in fact, over $820,000 with the two, the vehicles they're getting, but the operating budget is over $600,000 with now 11 people working there, including a full-time position of an adoption specialist. Now, why is that a problem? It makes me think about the divorced families where you have a mom and dad, and you're asking, "Who's in control?" You have an organization that, and I will tell you, and I don't want to get off here without it, I have the highest admiration for David Gonzalez. He has been dealing with the last year and a half that I can only fathom what he has had to do, and he is to be commended for it. This is not even in the same league as what we've had to put into with COVID, but it still counts. And what you have is a division that is funded and hired by the county and owns by the county with rules by the city. And as Councilman Young said, who's in control? Who's on first? So you've got a $650,000 budgeted division, for lack of a better way to put it, and nobody is really, you know, I know if you're aware that the county has animal control rules as well. They have their own ordinances. So what's happening and why I bring this up so strongly is, I don't see a commissioner here. This is a problem that affects almost every Victoria person. If it is a situation where they don't have the facility to do their job, then the commissioners need to address that. If it's a situation where 11 people and $600,000, of which 530 is salaries, it's not enough to provide the services that Victoria needs, the commissioners need to address it. Unfortunately, the city can't. So I'm sitting here talking to you about an orange you're passing that's giving control to an organization you don't control. I don't know if you understand the paradox there. That being said, also, Mr. Gush did miss my impoundment a little off there. What I had asked for doesn't take but one sentence. If a dog is impounded and an owner or anyone else for any reason, because remember, we have in there, "Animal control may impound for any violation." It doesn't say for rabies, for dangerous, it says for any violation. And I understand his concern, and I'm going to spot him this one. But if you're going to have that in there, it needs to have a qualifying sentence that says, "The owner," because just because the owner shows up, if it's been impounded, doesn't mean they have to give it to them. The owner may elect to have the animal impounded at a private veterinarian, licensed veterinarian of their choice. If I'm willing to pay for it, number one, it alleviates, I don't know why they wouldn't want to do it, because it alleviates the overcrowdness, and number two, I sleep a lot better. So it doesn't take months to do it, it is one sentence that qualifies it, and that would be what I'd ask to be put in there. I do have strong feelings on the five days because of their own statements. We're trying to help these animals. It's not, and it's not an us against them, it can't be with animal control. But when you have an adoption specialist, I don't think we have that many come in that if an owner comes in and surrenders an animal, they should be required to contact Adopt a Pet, Dorothy O'Connor, and Three License Rescues. Takes them maybe 15 minutes. And I guarantee you, one of them will take that dog unless it is so far gone that it can't be. Those are the kind of changes the citizens want to see. They want to see a pet-friendly environment that you're not worrying about. My cat gets out, and by the time I think to call. For instance, and I hate to go back to it, was it Gage with his dog? That poor boy had no idea what the law was or what to do, and because of it, a dog died that shouldn't have, but he had no idea. So it's very difficult for the public to see that and then trust that the system's going to work. They're looking to you and to the county commissioners to make sure that works. The other proposal I had, which I brought up last time, and I'm going to keep reiterating, and I'm going to approach the commissioners, is that a citizens committee, which includes a licensed veterinarian, people from rescues, animal people, even control, are put together the same as the Parks and Rec, same as the Building Commission, as a oversight committee for the animal control or animal situation in Victoria. You can't do it, because they don't work for you. The county can with you. And I'm going to be approaching them with the same idea, that the two of you work together to appoint, it could even be six people, seven people, three from each and one vet in the middle or someone in the middle, so that the thing it will accomplish that is the most important thing, it will restore the faith and trust of the community that their animals are going to be protected and that this just isn't a, "Well, it's a kill facility, they're just going to keep, well, manage," whatever it was called, "managed intake, they're just going to kill dogs." I don't think anybody wants that. I don't think they want that. And if it takes more of a facility, that's a conversation I'm about to have with four people, maybe five. So with those thoughts, as far as the one tonight, I would urge you to keep it at five days at this point, based on their own statement at the last meeting. I hate to think of any animal, and it's easy to say, "Well, the owner should show up." It just happens. And when it does, there's no going back. Once the animal is put down, you can't undo it. So it's not just an emotional, and this is an emotional thing. I mean, for many of you that grew up here, 30 years ago, we had the same issues with the noise ordinance. I mean, I helped write the one that's up there, and we got through that. I think we can get through this, but you've got to think about the effect. The downstream effect isn't that animal control will be backed up or animals will die. The downstream is that Victoria will lose all faith and trust that their animals are protected and being taken care of, and it doesn't have to be that way. I don't, I've talked to every rescue, I've talked to the vets, everybody is on board to work with you and to work with the county to make this work. This is only the start of it. So with those in mind, and I think I covered all of them, I got rid of excretious, I should be happy, but I do want to thank Mr. Gush, because he did go out of his way for us to work through this, and I think he's done an exemplary job.
Thank you, Mr. Klimist. Is there anybody else for the public hearing that hadn't filled out a comment card?
I didn't drop.
Okay, come on. Please, we do like our remarks limited to three minutes.
Absolutely. I'll go four. My name is April Butler. This is the second time that I've had the pleasure of following Mr. Klimist, and that is a hard act to follow. He speaks eloquently and with the utmost respect for each of you. He is passionate about this, as am I. So what I would like to do is kind of expound on some of the things that he discussed and do that from a very layman's perspective. Let me start with saying that I too respect animal control. I know David very well, and I hold him in the highest regard. He has a very difficult job. I will follow that with saying that I was out of town for the last meeting, and so I watched it on YouTube. It was disheartening when you asked how many employees David had, and he had to turn to Scott and Jose to determine the number of team members that he had. I would expect that anybody that's in charge of a team would know how many people they had on their team. The same happened when you asked him the process for intake and what that looked like. He defers to his team. There's nothing wrong with that, he's the leader. But it says something to me when you refer to them as subject matter experts, when they don't necessarily know their subject matter. We talked a lot about, first of all, let me thank you, Councilmember Delagars, that I think you very adamantly spoke for the public. The public responded, and they responded in kind to the poll. You had over how many responses? 11,000 responses to the poll? That says something, and I think that those comments should be taken into great consideration when you're sitting at council and making decisions for your community. I wanted to read just a couple of quotes, because we refer, again, to animal control as subject matter experts. Time and time again, I've heard that through this whole ordinance process. I certainly do not want to diminish animal control, but I think it's important that you hear these quotes. you hear these quotes. Quote, "Victoria Animal Control is going to euthanize 20 dogs, puppies included. They give us rescues, only a 24-hour notice to do something." Does this make you mad? It should. "Rescues, time and again, have made efforts to provide funds, donations, tools, and resources. None of it is ever put to use. This is not a first, it is a weekly event." Second quote. These are all from different individuals. Today, this was three days ago, a volunteer took her large trap over to Bloomington to help trap a dangerous dog. This dog chases children and other, other people's small pets. Two volunteers caught five dogs. When they called Victoria Animal Control on Friday, they were told it would be at least Monday before they, before they could come out and pick up the dogs. Constable Meyer stepped in, made a phone call to VAC, and VAC showed up in less than 30 minutes. So when a citizen called, they didn't respond. It took Constable Meyer becoming involved. Since VAC doesn't want to do their jobs, volunteers will. Third, "Today I received a phone call from someone who found a dog that appeared to be dying on a busy road. She called Animal Control and was told they wouldn't come since it was after hours. VPD was involved and reached out to VAC to call the rescue," who posted this quote. "The rescue was told that they will only respond to a dog call after hours if there's human aggression." So we've talked a lot about the trickle-down of a three-day versus a five-day. They're not responding now. Things aren't going to change. What the community sees isn't going to change unless the things that we've talked about as far as community involvement and providing that structure for the community so that they feel like they have a voice is going to change. Those are three different quotes from three different rescues who work with animal control and go out there and take the dogs that no one else will take. Three different rescues. If you Google it, you'll find comment after comment after comment. If you go read the reviews, you'll see reviews that are very derogatory. We can't change it unless you listen to the community and you take the community's advice. Everything that Mr. Klimist has stood up here and said could not have been said more eloquently, with more force, and been more resounding of how all of us feel. I have some pictures here that I could pass out to you, because I have one little green dot left on my time. But I don't know that you'd really want to see them. This is a yard. This over here is a little milk crate. This is the milk crate up close. There were four, there were two phone calls to Animal Control, asking them to go get the puppy that had been left outside for days under this milk crate. They didn't respond. Animal control should not be your go-to for subject matter. It should be your rescues, and it should be your community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing portion of this, and we can go into making motions and discussion. We need a motion on the table first so that we can at least amend or make motions to amend, or pass it as is, or decline it as is.
I move we adopt the ordinance. So we can discuss it and amend it.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, have the item on the table, so let's go through the easy ones first. Mr. Gush's. And the only comment I have is, does it make more sense in your first amendment for 452A to C to replace or otherwise with and?
Did you want to replace?
Or otherwise, the last two words of the red with and.
I've just got it on the screen now. For those who are watching on TV, the or otherwise, Mr. Bucknight, the reason that I have it written as an or and not an and is because I recognize there are sections in our community that do not have fences currently. And so if you have an entire neighborhood where there is no fence, you're essentially requiring that owner to put up a fence in order to screen the chickens from public view. There might be places available within that yard, such as behind a house, where it would meet the requirements of being screened from public view, even without a fence. And so that's the reason it's written as an or, but I certainly leave it to y'all's discretion to change it to and if you wish.
So what I heard you say is it depends on where you live in the city, whether or not you need a fence or not?
No, sir. I, I'm providing an option so that someone does not have to build a fence if they don't already have one.
And it's possible that someone could have a, a big chicken coop, or, or could have some kind of a thing in the, in the back of their home so that, and have a big yard so that it's not visible from the street. And if we change that to and, they would be required to have a fence.
Yeah, I think the, the or otherwise makes sense because just what, what Ms. Scott said, that there could be circumstances where the fence that's there may not meet the requirements, but the chicken coop isn't visible because of some other partition or whatever else. So I, I think that the key there is not visible from a public street. This gives different methodologies to get there, which makes sense to me.
I agree. Stay with the or.
As is. Okay. So everybody's okay with Amendment One? So let's just go through them before we make a motion to, to amend. Amendment Two, the foul shall be kept in a manner so as to prevent any noise which would unreasonably discomfort or annoy a person with ordinary sensibilities. Good. Head nodding around, okay. The leash requirement, so you can take your dangerous dog out for a walk, I'm good with that. Otherwise, there's not an option. Okay? And number four, pretty, pretty easy. Okay. Well, I'd like to do this is to have a motion to approve this slate as presented from someone, and then we'll tackle the days as a separate motion.
I make that motion to approve this slate as presented.
A second.
All right, is there any further discussion on these amendments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, Mr. Gush's slate of amendments as presented, all passed. And now, if anybody would like to make a motion on the three versus five, or if there is no motion, just ayes.
Right now, in the ordinance, it's as presented, it's five.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Five business days.
Five business days right now.
So then there would be no need for an emotion, a motion amendment, right? If we leave it at five?
If we want to leave it at five, and no one has a motion, then we will leave it at five.
Leave it at five.
All right, good. There's no motion to amend, so we have an amended motion on the floor to approve the second reading of the animal control ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Remember, for the third reading, we're not anticipating any additional changes, and so I don't intend to post it as a public hearing again unless you request it so. I'm happy to do that. However, if we do need to make the change because of the change at the legislature, if the governor signs that bill, then I think it would be appropriate for us to post it as a public hearing so the public could speak up on that issue as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gush.
I was going to say, Mr. Gush, you are going to, again, about the alternative impoundment slash euthanasia?
Yes, sir.
Question?
Yes, sir. Well, I will bring that back at a later date. It will likely be after the beginning of the year. We've already reached out to a couple of vets about whether or not this is a workable plan for them. I've also spoken to a couple of people who might be interested in serving on the committee as citizens, and I'm not prepared to announce any of that yet, of course, but I, I'm looking forward to moving forward with that. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you very much.
All right, on to the consent agenda.
Item D1 is the adoption amendments of the work session on September 24, 2021, and the regular meeting on October 5, 2021. Item D2 is a resolution approving contract renewals for WW Services, Lawn Star Yard Care, and Ground Effects for the mowing of city-owned properties in a cumulative amount of $268,502. Item D3 is a resolution approving a change to Victoria Farmer's Market 2021 market rules and guidelines. Item D4 is a resolution approving two 2020, the purchase of two 2023 Auto Car ACX 64s with Howl, Dorapack dot Python, 28 cubic yard refuse collection bodies from Chastain Auto Car in the amount of $739,487. And Item D5 is a, a resolution terminating the People Fund Relief Program.
I move with, second.
All right, motion in a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E1.
Item E1 is a resolution awarding the 2021 Rehabilitation and Overlay Project, which is Woodway Phase 3 and Briderwich Phase 2, to Brandon Paving Company LTD for their low proposal amount of $2,404,566.
Just here to answer questions.
Yep. Any questions for? Again, it will be tested before we do it, the base.
This one's reconstruction.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's right, this is not the, I saw sealed, competitively sealed proposal, and it triggered my head. All right, thank you for keeping me straight.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. Do they have any more projects going on at this time? I'm talking about Brandon Paving.
Yes, they do. They have Crestwood, and that's, that's their largest one, but it's kind of a different process, different group that's working on, on that.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yes.
Bring that up.
Okay. Is there any further questions of Mr. Gill, and motions in order?
I'd, I move we adopt this item.
A second.
All right, motion in a second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item E2.
Item E2 is a resolution adopting the 2021 Downtown Master Plan.
So for this item, staff is also available to answer any questions you might have, as well as Chance Sparks with Freeza Nichols, no relation to Little Sparky. Obviously, we had a chance to review this plan several times, so we'll take direction from council on how you'd like to proceed tonight.
Anybody like to?
I move we adopt the plan.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Motion in a second. I, I just want to say a couple of things. Thank you, Chance. This is great. It looks fantastic. While we know we can't accomplish everything in the next year, it gives us something to strive for throughout the, the years to come. Certainly, I would like to see us all try to tackle the low-hanging fruit that is within this plan, and it's worked towards making this downtown master plan come to, come to life. It's going to take 10, 15 years to make it come to life, but it gives us some good direction, and thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Daniel.
That's fantastic job.
Thank you both.
A lot of buzz around town about it.
Lot of excitement, you're right.
If there are no further comments or questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Item E3 is a resolution approving the design for the Ben Wilson Street Corridor project.
Move we adopt them. Item E3.
A second.
Okay, let's, let's take a look at it.
I'm going to introduce Nick Sikava with Freeza Nichols, our consultant. He's going to go through a brief presentation.
The only thing I'll add before he starts for some context. So early on in the process, or I should say, at the end of the process of finalizing the agreement with UHV on this project, council, and under the leadership of former Mayor McCoy, there was language that was added that would require this step, which was bringing the final design to council for consideration. The reason for that was centered around the questions council had about drainage. And so there has actually been a couple of slides that have been added to the presentation that you'll see tonight that wasn't included in the packet, that specifically hit on, hit on drainage, since we know that that was a big driver behind adding this step in the process.
Okay, yep. So my name is Nick Sikava, I'm with Freeza Nichols, and we're here tonight to present the final design for the Ben Wilson Street project. This project started all the way back in 2015 with the Ben Wilson Street Corridor Study. The last update that council received was back in April of this year. We were between 50 and 90% design, and we approved an amendment for a larger tower design. So I'm going to try to run through these pretty quick, but there's certainly a lot of information, so if I don't hit on a question that you have, we'll have time to go through those questions. There's really no significant changes from the last strip map that you saw in April. The design is a road diet, will convert Ben Wilson Street from a five-lane roadway to a three-lane roadway, from Airline Road to Red River Street. This, that segment is going to include a full-depth reconstruction of the roadway, all the way down to the base material. There are eight-foot-wide sidewalks designed on both sides of the roadway. The design also includes improvements to the water and wastewater system, including new services to residential and the businesses adjacent to the roadway. City has been in coordination with the Bronson Terrace Neighborhood Association and moving down the road to the entry, the north entry to UHV. You can see on this slide, the project will include enhanced landscaping, it will include a raised center median. We will be adding a new pedestrian hybrid beacon signal in addition to the signal that's already there, so there will be two pedestrian hybrid signals and three crossing locations, and those signals will be coordinated together. Moving down to the central part of campus, you can see that the focal point of this project will be a new tower that is going to be right there by the horseshoe. And then on the south campus entrance there at Red River Street, continuing down the, the landscape area there, we'll have improvements to the new STEM building, and also, we have coordinated with UHV's new health and wellness building that's going to go in on the southeast corner of the Red River intersection as well. Drainage issues, we, overall drainage is constrained downstream of this project. Lone Tree Creek and Railroad Ditch are the downstream receiving points of this project. The system that drains into Railroad Ditch via Red River and outfalls at Del Mar is an undersized system, and it is included on the city's master plan to upgrade that system, but that, that is not included with the project, so want to make, make sure that's The elevations along Ben Wilson Street are, are low-lying in some areas. The, the spine road that runs through campus sits about two feet lower than the intersection of Red River, and about four feet lower than the intersection of Airline, and so it's a, it's a bowl-shaped roadway, and that's one of the primary reasons that, that water tends to pond during heavy rain events. Touching on the improvements that we're making to the drainage, specific to this project, we're adding a new 36-inch trunk line shown in red on this slide. The two blue lines on both sides of the roadway, those are going to remain, so we're adding additional drainage capacity to the project. We're also going to be taking a look at those existing lines, we're going to be cleaning them, we're going to be adding additional manholes for future city maintenance access, and we're going to be improving any spot repairs that are needed to those lines to help improve what we can with this specific project. Also want to point out that the new developments that are, or have been undertaken by the university, including the, the new parking lot and the new STEM building being two of the most recent improvements, have included detention pond design, and UHV is, is doing what they can to mitigate for the additional runoff. So the, the detention ponds that have been included in those two new developments have limited the amount of runoff that, that, that comes to the roadway. The next three slides show different rendered views of the, the clock tower, and this is what council app... And this is what council approved back in April to to go from a about a 20 foot tower to a 50 foot tower. So these are the final rendered images of what that tower is going to look like.
And to be clear, it's not a clock tower. Right.
It's it's not a clock tower. The what you see on this image is what drivers will see north and southbound is they'll see a a U H V logo. That is what is going to face north and south. What's going to face east and west is going to be a LED display panel instead of a clock face and.
With the time.
Get to class, get to class.
Will that LED panel be subject to ordinances within the city? As far as. Animations not allowed and all that stuff.
Great question. The University of Houston, as a state agency, is is exempt from a lot of regulation that the city can impose. As you know, we, as a local governmental entity, cannot impose our will on the state. And this is one of those areas where I believe they are probably exempt from our sign regulation.
Even though they're on our roadway?
Yes, sir. Now, you know, the contractual requirements aside, as a regulatory question, I don't believe we have the authority to regulate it.
But those faces are not facing the street because this isn't a four way street. There is a, I guess, a driveway coming out of the university and maybe people coming out of the parking lot. But it's it's really the the U H V is what is visible from the street and the the TV screen, you have to be in the dormitory or in the library or the STEM building, I would guess.
Yes, ma'am, and I I should further clarify that digital billboards are not illegal in the city. They simply have requirements about how often they can change, what the images can be. There has to be static images, there are brightness requirements. So it is certainly possible for the university to have a digital billboard on that tower and still comply with the city regulation.
So there was a question at the last meeting about the the height of the tower. The the height that you see here, it is between 45 to 50 foot tall. The the height of those LED panels is approximately 32 to 38 feet above ground level. I know that there was some discussion about the height. What you see above the signs is a. You see the rooftop with the fiberglass windows. Inside those windows will be LED lights that will be able to be programmed by the university. They're they're intended to produce more of a soft glowing light, not a not a harsh bright light. And those will be, in addition to the LED panels, U H V will have the ability to remotely program those lights so that whether there be a special event or some other event that they want to change the color of those lights, they they'll be able to do that. The LED panels, I mean, those are those are dynamic displays, just like your your television. They can either display a static image or they can they can display a dynamic message if they choose to do that.
And I do know that it's U H V's intention to comply with or or some of the items that are in it's in our ordinance, because I think one of you had asked that question, one of you. Had asked that question before, and so it's definitely their intent to not cause any issues for both risks. So it's their intent to be in in alignment with what our ordinance says anyway.
I appreciate that because it makes it easier for us to enforce the ordinance in the rest of the city.
Here's another image that shows one of the student drop off areas with with the shelter that will also serve the transit stop there in front of Victoria. U H V. And then this final aerial image shows the tower looking south toward Red River Street. And one thing that's one thing to note is that the roadway will transition from asphalt to concrete here at the center part of campus. That decision was made to improve future maintenance, ease of maintenance for the city and not to be disruptive to the university when that when that roadway does need eventual maintenance down the down the way. On both north and south entries, there will be campus entry marker signage. Those will be those signs will match the brick patterns of the tower. They will include lighting that's embedded into the pedestal base of those towers. And then there's a updated fly through video. See if this will play, and this starts at the north end and. Ends at the center of campus.
Remind me how many years that vegetation, is it 10 or 15? That this is taken into account.
Good point. That's not what the landscaping will look like on day one. Obviously, had some years to mature. But we did include some larger plant material, larger trees with this project so that it's not, you know, it doesn't look like. You know, small. Too small right off the bat, so that's one thing to keep in mind. But yes, this is not day one of the project. This is more of a mature look after a few years of growth. The schedule, we are expected to advertise this project for bids next month in November. Anticipated to review the bids and select a contractor by the end of the year. Once the city and U H V evaluate those bids, we'll work toward recommending contract for approval early next year. Notice to proceed in March, and we are anticipating about a 14 month construction process. And with that, open up to questions.
Been a long time coming.
Yay.
It is, it looks very nice.
Thank you.
Nice design. I mean, I wish we would have been able to stick with the concrete. For the entire street.
Yes.
The width of the road at 15 feet allows an emergency vehicle to pass, does it?
There are several turnouts, if if you notice.
If you go into the bus lane, you could get get to the side so that an emergency vehicle could.
Due to the relative short distances of of these medians, the the bus turnouts, the intersections will allow plenty of opportunity for for vehicles to pull off when emergency vehicles pass.
I do have a question concerning the lighting, the traffic lights. Why was that type of system? Picked over a traditional traffic light? Because yesterday I saw two very close calls where students were almost hit because the drivers do not understand that system.
So these are what's called a pedestrian hybrid beacon system. It's the same system that's out there currently. We're adding an additional one with a new crosswalk here. They. They have a higher compliance rate, not, I wouldn't say that a traffic signal, but then, you know, we do want to provide a stop condition for students to be able to cross the road. One one benefit of of this project is the the crossing distance is shortened dramatically. Currently, they're crossing five lanes of traffic. Now they're only crossing one lane before they can refuge in the median and they can cross the second lane. So that's an important distinction because students may feel that they can cross without the assistance of of the light at that short of a distance.
Those aren't elevated by any. The design didn't look like, looks like you have ramps entering to the crosswalk on the street. Where I've been on other campuses, when you're driving through all the crosswalks are elevated to the level of the sidewalk or shortly less so that everybody's aware when they're driving over that it's really a crosswalk you're crossing.
These crosswalks in the roadway are not elevated. The the they will have special thermoplastic that'll be marking those crosswalks that will designate those and provide additional visibility. There will be pedestrian signs that will provide additional visibility. They will they will be marked very well, and they will also be lit. You can see in this image, they'll have lighting on both. Both approaches.
Let me ask you a question on the lights where the crossings are going to be for the students. Because you don't have five lanes now, will they lower the amount of time that those lights stay red? Because right now, some people are running the lights when they start blinking.
So the way the way a pedestrian hybrid beacon works, and there will be in a there will be a new sign that will be installed on these is the the solid red indicates the stop condition. The flashing red indicates that if the if the crossing is clear, drivers may proceed. And that will be a new sign with that instruction that will be mounted on the mast arm to give drivers, because there is confusion. When it goes to that flashing red, some people will go, some people will stay stopped. And so there will be a new instructional sign that'll clarify that for the driver, that if the crosswalk is clear, they may proceed on a flashing red.
I think it gets confusing because it's different than school buses, which we're all used to here.
Yeah, because I've seen them run those lights when they're blinking and some people.
But you can when you blink. You're allowed to when they blink.
Yeah, well, see, it's confusing because the guy behind you could be honking at you. You know, you should stop there. You know where to go is stop.
If you get there, either after the yellow's finished or, you know, when it's been red and then it flashes red. Yeah, I've I've found myself wondering whether it's going to turn red again or or what it's going to do. So that sign will help.
Yes. And I was going to ask on the fence that you're going to put from the corner of where the soccer fields are at now, going all the way to the end of Airline. That's going to be one solid, because right now we have, everybody's got their different kind of fences. So you're going to make that one uniform fence?
So we we initially intended to make it all uniform and to actually bring that into the the city property. Right now. The city is still in discussions with the Bronson Terrace HOA. There are some properties that have multiple fences. You have the chain link fence, but some people have installed additional privacy fences behind that. And there's a there's a discussion ongoing at the city right now to try to make that uniform. But the fencing was actually taken out of this contract. It was decided not to put a third fence in front to try to make an agreement with with those owners to get a uniform fence down there as well. Ken, I don't know if you have any other updates.
No, I think that I think that just leave it at that. I think that's fair to say that we didn't want, you know, those coordination coordination efforts to delay the rest of the project. But it is something that the neighborhood is very interested in doing. And we actually have one of the neighborhood leaders here. And so we're still working that. It is our intention, long term, to find a solution for that. It just may not come. With this project.
Okay. I just want to ask for those crate myrtles.
Yes.
Good. Derek? Daryl? They're giving me my crate myrtles.
All right. Thank you, appreciate the presentation.
Second already, I think.
Yes, we do. We do have a motion in the second. Thank you for that, I forgot. So is there any further discussion? Dr. Glenn, Dr. Barron, thank you all. Appreciate it. And Mr. Prizer, it's good to see you back there too as well. Look forward to seeing the completion right before our 200th birthday, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Great. Thanks a lot, item E four.
Item E four is a resolution to join the state of Texas opioid settlement agreements.
Good evening again, mayor and members of council. I believe this presentation will be shorter than my last one. The discussion tonight is whether the city should join in the global opioid settlement that the state of Texas is negotiating. If I can just explain this by analogy, this is similar to sometimes you receiving in the in the in the mail, a notification that you're eligible to join a class action settlement. And if you sign on the paper and send the paper back to the attorneys representing the class action, they promise they'll send you, you know, 20 bucks or 50 bucks, whatever it may be, to join that class action settlement. This is a similar situation where the state of Texas is negotiating to attempt to settle some litigation, and they are asking local jurisdictions to join in into that settlement agreement. It is a complicated issue, and so I've asked for the Attorney General's Office to send a couple of people here to help explain it to you so that you can make an informed decision about whether it's best for the city to join in this settlement. And so I present to you tonight Rick Berlin and Sarah Leon from the Attorney General's Office, who will explain and give their recommendation.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us. My name is Rick Berlin, I'm an Assistant Attorney General and the managing attorney of the Houston Consumer Protection Division Office. So thank you all for having me.
I'm Sarah Leon with the Government Relations Division here at the Texas Attorney General's Office. And we met with several folks of the city of Victoria in the past. I believe it was a Golden Crescent Cog. And, you know, it was very receptive, and we're we're happy to be here with you all, the council and mayor and mayor pro tem. So we just, we're going to go over the exact same presentation we did with the council of governments this past, I think it was last month, right? So if you have any questions, I'm going to give it over to Rick Berlin since I don't want to take up a lot of y'all's time because sometimes it can be a longer conversation if I tune in from from here to there. But, okay, thanks really.
Sure, and we have a bit of a longer slide deck here, but I'll be as efficient as I can be with it. So the reason that we're here today is because of the opioid crisis. And this has been going on for many years at this point. But you may not know that last year was actually the worst year of the opioid crisis here in Texas. Drug overdose deaths rose nearly 30%. And we had a record number of overdoses here in the state. We've been working on a settlement with the major manufacturers and distributors of opioids for several years now. And we've recently come to an agreement with manufacturer Johnson and Johnson, as well as three of the distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen. This national settlement between both private plaintiffs and attorneys general has resulted in a $26 billion settlement for the 43 states and private plaintiffs. Well, the 26 billion is just for the attorneys general. Texas's portion of that is one and a half billion. 1.17 is from the distributors and 268 is from Johnson and Johnson. Just found out today that we have reached an agreement with Johnson and Johnson that they will pay that money out to the state this year, or, I'm sorry, 2022 in April. So for folks that sign on by January 2nd, which is the deadline, that payment will come from them all upfront. And this is important because some of the other payments are front loaded, but then will tail over the course of about 10 to 20 years. Another important aspect of this settlement is the injunctive relief, and that's to keep the opioid manufacturers and distributors from creating a same or similar problem down the road. Johnson and Johnson is going to get out of the opioid business for 10 years. The distributors are going to work together to create a database. A lot of the problem that occurred was because the left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing, and so people could pill shop. The distributors were sending way too many pills to certain parts of the country for the people that lived there. So you'd have small counties getting hundreds of thousands of pills when only a few hundred people live there. So hopefully, this injunctive relief will keep this problem from occurring again. The the monetary settlement, which is probably the most important part for y'all, breaks down like this. Johnson and Johnson on here is nine years, that's changed. That's all going to come in, hopefully by April of 2022. And then the distributors, the largest part of that will come within the first three years and then tail off over the next 18 years. You'll see there, under that second bullet, there's a 55% base, 45% incentive. Those two lines are part of the structure of the settlement. What what we're asking for today is for y'all to sign. What, what we're asking for today, uh, are, is for y'all to sign on to the settlement. There's two documents that the city will need to sign, uh, and then adopt a resolution as well. What we're trying to do is get as many political subdivisions, uh, to sign on to this settlement as possible, because the way the settlement is structured is that there, if, if a county or city that hasn't sued decides to sue later, then the part of the settlement that is incentive-based will be withheld from the participating, uh, subdivisions. And so, it's sort of a carrot and stick. If people that already aren't suing, don't sue, then everybody gets the money upfront. If not, then about half of that money is going to be put in escrow until that new litigation resolves itself. So, our goal here is to help address a public health crisis. We want to bring the most money to Texas that we possibly can. That 1.5 billion, uh, at this point, is the maximum settlement. If we can't get everyone to sign on, that number goes down. Our hope is that we will get everyone to sign on. I know the, some of the litigating counties have, at least in principle, resolved some of their issues, and so, I think they're going to be joining this settlement as well, which is good news. Uh, and we're trying to get out to as many of the 406 general-purpose subdivisions in the state as we possibly can, so we can get everybody on board. Uh, we've been to a little better than half of them so far, uh, so we got a, a busy holiday season ahead of us, um, but we think we should be able to, to get to just about everybody. So, how do the settlement dollars actually get to you? So, of the 1.5 billion dollars, uh, 15% of that will go in direct payments to your city, the county, uh, the other subdivisions in Texas. 15% will go to the state to help us address, uh, opioid issues, and then the remaining 70% will go into a fund. This is separate from the general fund. It's going to be, uh, set up by the Comptroller outside of the general fund, and then governed by an opioid council. And this council will, um, divide the money in, by public health district, and the, um, counties and the cities in the public health district can then petition to the opioid council in sort of like a grant process. Those pe, the, the people on the opioid council are still being appointed. Uh, there is both local appointees that will be appointed by, uh, HHSE from the local public health district, and then there's state-level appointments as well. Okay. Uh, down here in the middle, some of the surrounding communities, as well as Victoria, I, we'd gotten a question on why the county of Victoria has such a considerable more money than the city. I talked to our folks in Austin. The, the 1.5 billion, or the 26 billion, is apportioned according to population being one, uh, and then the other three factors that they look at are overdoses, uh, people affected by opiate abuse disorder, and the number of pills that go into the county. So, we're supposed to be getting the underlying, uh, formulas and, and numbers for this distribution within the next few weeks from Johnson &amp; Johnson, uh, but our understanding is that if, for example, you have a county hospital, uh, that does a lot of the opioid treatment, that that, those numbers are the ones that are used in modifying the population. And so, that's how we end up with, uh, Victoria County getting substantially more than Victoria the city, even though most of the, um, population lives within the city limits. Here's the public health regions I was talking about. Victoria's part of Region 4. So, there's 33 million, again, this is assuming that everybody participates, uh, there's 33 million set aside for Region 4, and then you could partner, uh, with Victoria the County, you could partner with surrounding counties, other communities, to try and address, uh, the opioid issues in your community. And when, these funds are, uh, intended to be used for opioid treatment, uh, prevention, and education, so, and abatement as well. It can be for future expenses, as well as expenses that have already been incurred. So, to the extent that the county has had to pay for treatment, or Narcan, uh, or things of that nature in the past, then that money can be used to go towards paying those debts back as well. Here's some background, uh, on the lawsuit. It's in the, the slide deck that y'all have as well. I'm not going to go into this too long, because that'll take a lot of time. One thing that I will mention from this is, uh, the Purdue, uh, is probably the most famous name associated with this issue. They're currently in bankruptcy. Uh, the hope is that they will get out of bankruptcy in the relatively near future, and whatever settlement is reached with them will be sort of in addition to this money here. One of the reasons why we're trying to settle this case and not, uh, take this to trial and get every penny that we can, is that it would put these companies out of business. Uh, and these companies do have legitimate, uh, business uses for our communities. I mean, they provide all the drugs that, that we take, uh, and so, we don't want them to go out of business. The other reason is when a company goes into bankruptcy, uh, Purdue, for example, is spending 50 million a month on bankruptcy attorneys, and that's money that could go to helping alleviate, uh, this problem. So, we want to avoid these companies going into bankruptcy and try and get this money, uh, to the communities now, not five years from now, after we litigate and take it to trial and appeal, uh, before we actually see any of the money. So, the next steps would be to sign on to the settlement and execute the releases. Uh, there are two documents that, um, okay, that are in the packet already, as well as the, uh, the resolution, and as long as we can get that in by January 2nd, uh, then Victoria can participate as well. And then, the last slide has, uh, some more information at the Texas Attorney General website, as well as an email address, if you have any questions that come up after I leave. And that's it. Any questions?
That was a lot better than a, a, a letter that we get in the mail.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight.
Sure.
Do I have any further questions for him, or for Mr. Goush?
I just have one quick question. When you go back to the slide where you were talking about, uh, the two different, um, what was it? The monies that were separate, and you said they could go ahead and, you're talking about, one of them can be accessed right now, and the other one later if somebody else comes up?
Sure. So, there's, there's two funds. Um, one is a direct payment to the subdivisions. That's 15% of the 1.5 billion, and that comes directly to the city. Uh, there, the, the lion's share of the settlement will go into a fund, uh, the opioid council controls, and then, uh, portions of that are earmarked for the different public health regions in the state. Um, I'll go back to the beginning. So, this is your direct payment, the 103,000, and then the 33.3 million is the larger fund, and that's the one where you would come up with a proposal for how that money can be spent or allocated, and then petition to the opioid council in what we believe will be like a grant process. They're adopting those rules currently.
Okay. So, one's automatic, and this one we have to apply for?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
So, the rules that you have to apply for haven't been set?
That is correct.
Okay. But potentially, our fire department, EMS service could, could, could fit under that?
Absolutely.
All right. I have one question for you, Mr. Goush. Is there any reason we wouldn't join?
The only reason you might potentially not join is if we wanted to try to sue these opioid manufacturers ourselves. That would be a very expensive proposition, and I do not recommend it.
Thank you. Not willing to entertain a motion?
Make a motion.
One second.
All right. Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Too slow, Mark.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
E5, yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Item E5 is a resolution adopting guidelines for the use in 2021 redistricting process.
Mayor and council, I'll introduce this item as well. We've been talking about redistricting for the last several meetings, and I've been leading up to this. This is the presentation of the initial assessment and resolutions by Alan Borquez. Um, Alan and I are colleagues in the Brotherhood of Unpronounceable Names, and so, I hope that I have gotten close on his last name, and I invite him to correct me if I did not. Alan is a good friend and a great lawyer. Come on up, Alan.
Thank you very much, Thomas. You nailed it. Mayor and council, Alan Borquez, Borquez Law Firm, uh, the firm you had hired to guide you through the redistricting process, uh, at your previous meeting where you underwent your training, uh, that happened to have been my birthday, so forgive me, I had dinner with my wife and daughter, and Mr. Resin Pullman, my colleague, came and provided the training. So, now that you know more about redistricting than most anybody else in town, uh, you're ready to receive the initial assessment. And our agenda today is very short. You've had a long meeting, so I will keep this brief. We will discuss your 2020 demographics. I'll present the initial assessment, which is my report, and then we have an action item for you. Looking at your charter, which is the primary law that we look at when going through the redistricting process, you're reminded that you have six city council members, four from single-member districts, and two from the two super-districts. You see your current boundaries illustrated on the map for those viewing from home or watching this later. When you look at the 2010 data, you have 62,592 as your population. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, as of April 1st, give or take, of 2020, your population is 65,534. So, there was an increase of just shy of 1,00, uh, 3,000. In terms of the specific demographic breakdown, for ethnic or racial groups, you can see those listed on your slides, with a slight majority for those who reported as Hispanic. One thing I will point out is the note at the bottom, is that the numbers you see above are for one category and one category only. Respondents to the census have the ability to check more than one box. For example, to say you are white is a statement on your race. To say you are Hispanic is a statement on your ethnicity. So, someone could be white and Hispanic, or African-American and Hispanic, and so, the numbers can get very complicated. This is a very simple presentation. Looking at your total population for 2020, 65,534. Divide it by four, for your four single-member districts. The ideal district size is 16,384. That's an important number for the math that we're about to do. When you sat through your training with Mr. Pullman, he explained to you, one person, one vote. He explained that the total maximum deviation courts have accepted is 10%. So, that's the goal we're shooting for during this process. I'll present these numbers in a couple different ways, but here is the breakdown of just population, not looking at race or ethnicity yet, for each of the four single-member districts. So, you can start to see how the math goes. We have what the census reports per district, the ideal target district size, you see the deviation, plus or minus a certain percent from the ideal, and what that raw difference is. Here's another way to present the same information. You've got the, the ideal target district size, and I've bolded District 1 and District 2, because District 1 is the, is the most undersized or smallest district when measured to the ideal, and District 3 is the largest or most oversized district when compared to the ideal. So, the negative 0.68% for District 1 is crucial. The plus 18.22% for District 3 is crucial. So, you take these numbers and you ultimately add them together. The smallest deviation, the largest deviation, that comes up to 26.90%. That's more than 10. So, being, being, being a lawyer and, uh, poor at math, even I get that part. What does that mean for you? It means we are going through the redistricting process. We do have some clients that have ended the process at this point, because their deviation was less than 10. That is not the case for the City of Victoria. So, you saw a version of this slide previously. We scratched out the first two bullets. You see what's ahead. Having had your, your training, having gotten all your local data organized, having just now received your initial assessment, we are talking about criteria and guidelines for getting through this process. Two resolutions are on your agenda tonight as action items. Uh, they are in your agenda packet. The first is basically summarized with the bullets on, on this particular slide. Over the years, the U.S. federal courts have found these criteria are acceptable justifications for moving a si, single-member district line from one place to another. Uh, you have heard previously that race and ethnicity is a factor when we go through redistricting, but by law, it's not allowed to be the only factor or the predominant factor. So, we will gauge race and ethnicity as we start to move your lines around, but we're not going to put race or ethnicity above the more traditional factors that the courts have upheld, such as communities of interest, identifiable geographic back, uh, dividing lines, um, and those sorts of things. And so, you have a resolution in front of you that if you approve it tonight, which is what I'm asking and recommending, it will set forth the rules of the game for going through this process. We will be giving this to our mapping geographic expert, along with any other input you feed through our firm, through your staff, and we will come up with some draft maps for you to consider and give us feedback on, and also present to your citizens for their input. The second resolution is going to set forth the, the guidelines for what we call citizen maps. We may not have any in Victoria, but we go ahead and have this resolution in place in case any citizens, special interest groups, neighborhood associations have, have obtained the software necessary to manipulate the maps and, and download the census data. If they wish to present a map for us to review, analyze, and present to you, the city council, they would need to follow these guidelines. Mostly, they need to present maps that follow the same criteria that your maps are following. They're going to look at all of the same data that we are looking at. They're going to, uh, to redistrict the entire city versus just their favorite neighborhood or their district that they care the most about. Um, and if they do that, and they do it by the deadlines we've submitted, then we will analyze that, give you a report on that citizen map, and perhaps the citizens have a good idea that you would like to follow. Is it 18th or 19th?
18th.
Uh, working with your staff, we have set November 18th as the date to fill into the blank on that resolution, and that would be the deadline for any members of the public who want to take a stab at map drawing, to submit their map to us, so we can analyze it and get it to you in a timely manner. This is the, a, a, a draft, a proposal of the timeline that we have come up with, looking at your schedule here in Victoria and speaking with your staff. Uh, if everything moves along at a diligent pace as we have planned, you would have your first public mir, public hearing before the city council on the first map that you are inclined to adopt on December the 14th. Uh, if we do that, then we could have everything adopted by January the 18th. That is my recommendation, because the first date that... because the first date that someone could file for a place on the ballot for the May 22 election is going to be on January the 19th. By law, our deadline is February the 18th, but I recommend that we do it much sooner, and I think we're on target to do that. So that is it for my prepared remarks. I remind you, you have an action item of voting on those two resolutions if you're inclined to do so, and that is my request. Otherwise, I'm available if you have any questions.
I had one real quick. If you could go back to the slide that had the factors or the criteria that are used?
Certainly.
Yep. The second one, it's communities of interest should be maintained. Can you explain what communities of interest mean?
Absolutely. Community of interest is a very broad term. We're allowed to define it ourselves. What it traditionally means are our neighbors. If you we choose to define communities of interest, they could be in part housing subdivisions that are of similar quality and property values. If it's primarily apartments, then we group apartments with apartments. You could understand why some may not want to be grouped in the same community in the same district of fairly entry-level, working-class apartment housing and country-club type housing. That's one way communities tend to do that. Another way is to look at things like school attendance zones, school districts, identified neighborhoods that have a neighborhood association. Some communities identify with certain public resources, such as a certain public park or community center. And every town we go to, it's slightly different. So any feedback from you, your planning department or staff on communities of interest is something that helps us define that for the city of Victoria.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, and it's, I guess it's really broader than this, but it continues to bother me. So we're doing this for the city, and we're trying to not break up voting precincts, or we can use census tracts. I think I know what that means. But we're doing this first. I think there's a good chance, or maybe not, that other districts, that other entities will also have to do this. And I'm concerned about, it seems like we're doing it in a vacuum, and I know it's because of our timing, but can you either agree with me or or appease that in some way? And I guess maybe the school district might be one that would be an issue more so than the county, or I'm not really sure.
You're correct. Other districts will be other districts, political subdivisions will be going through this process. I'm not familiar with the school district. I assume the county is looking at the same thing. You are correct. We are allowed to do this in somewhat of a vacuum, but we're happy to share information if any of the other entities want to know what our our maps are looking like or what our priorities are, and we could interface with them if it comes up. I I think we get to do ours first while trying to respect where the county's election precincts are, just to make it easier in terms of efficient resources and polling places, but also to try as not to disturb voters' patterns of where they go and vote anymore than we have to.
But we're lucky that you can vote at any precinct here.
Excellent.
I guess that's the case.
That does make it easier.
So it makes it a lot easier from that perspective. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming and sitting through the whole meeting.
Not my first meeting to listen about dogs and chickens, Mayor.
All right. We need a motion to move forward. And when you make the motion, I would ask that you please look at the guidelines, and there's a date we need to fill in.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That'd be November 19. Eighteenth. Eighteenth. November 18th. I apologize, I misspoke earlier. My sister's birthday is the 19th, and so I got confused. The 18th is the date that we want to fill into that blank.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt E five and insert November the 18th as the deadline to submit our maps.
2021?
Yes, sir. 2021. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Goush.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, I'd like to go into recess for about 10 minutes. Just take a quick break, and then we will come back and follow with the city manager's report, and there's not going to be an executive session tonight, so.
Great.
All right. So back here at 7:42. I'll take a look at it.
Who's next?
Go.
All right. Call the session back into order.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm going to turn it over to Derek Farrell to introduce our city manager's report tonight.
Well, Mayor and Council, I want to, I'm going to make my comments brief, because the folks you came to listen to are here. But I do want to make sure, before we get started, that I thank you all for all the input and time and and energy that has been put into this whole broadband initiative, and to everyone that was on the broadband commission, and to all of the groups that have had input and and worked on this. I also want to thank our consultants at Cobb Finley. Today, we have Vanita Ram, Jared Brenstetter, and Jacob Triska. They have worked nonstop, and if you saw the 109-page report in your in your document, imagine how much time it takes to read that and double it to write it, right? So we're really grateful for the for these guys. And so I'm going to turn it over to them, and I'll be available to help answer questions after.
Thank you, Derek. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Mayor Protem. I just want to start by again echoing Derek's intro in terms of, you know, thanking you for being supportive of this, and and we're really excited to talk about the results of the study and our recommendations for how the city can move forward with the broadband initiative. Little delay. All right. So for the purpose of the the agenda, I'm going to keep it brief, obviously. It's been a long night. So we're going to go over the initiative, our process, the findings of the report, the solutions we came up with and recommendations, and then what we what the next steps look like. So Derek already introduced our team, but we have Vanita, our principal in charge, project manager on this job, and then Jacob Triska is a the project engineer that's doing a lot of the legwork. And so going back, the initiative, we just wanted to touch base on where this all started. Didn't start with us. It started with the Victoria Broadband Commission. The city and the residents and stakeholders were proactive to put this together, which is which is we give, you know, kudos to. That's a very critical time for broadband connectivity, and we had the foresight to put together this group and start talking about it. And so after we were brought on board to to perform this feasibility study, essentially our process was we reviewed the existing infrastructure. So that that's involving a combination of our research of public sources and also talking to stakeholders, talking to infrastructure owners, you know, who has fiber in the ground, who has wireless assets, what's the state of broadband in Victoria. Then we had a public engagement event and survey, which was, you know, again, very impressed with the with the city and the residents and their response. We had near 1,000 responses in a in a pretty short window on a topic that's, you know, kind of intimidating and confusing a lot of the time. So we were really excited about that. We got a lot of good information, which is in the report and we'll go over, and it really reflected a lot of what we saw in public data, but it also gave us a lot of on-the-ground insight, which is critical when public data a lot of times can be misleading. And then finally, our stakeholder engagement involved, I don't have the number with me, but we we met with multiple providers. We met with the ISD, University Houston, Victoria, essentially everyone on the commission, and then continued to add to that list and talked to as many stakeholders that we could, essentially in the process, because, again, the involvement is there. This is a hot topic, and it's really good to see the involvement. And then we took essentially the information from the public engagement, our review of the existing infrastructure, our engagement with stakeholders, and we started crafting a couple different solutions. Network solutions, what what type of network, what capacity does it need? You know, at the end of the day, we want to meet the needs directly based off of what the the residents are telling us, the residents, business owners, the community. And then finally, we take that all into a comprehensive analysis, and we look at, we start plugging those solutions and saying, what kind of business model would this look like? Where would the funding come from? Because this is the time where funding is the greatest and the need is the greatest, in our opinion. Because this is the time where funding is the greatest and the need's the greatest, in our opinion. So, that's our process. And so, I wanna go over the findings. So, this is just one of the, one of the questions we asked, but I wanted to go over the top three findings, which essentially was residents believe most of the current sources or services that they have are poor, neutral at best. The connectivity and internet access was the top challenge while living or working in Victoria. And then, the internet pricing and options were rated poorest of all the factors. So, pretty much hit on the top three things there about what's the quality of the service, you know, how big the need is. And then, you know, because we've identified it as a need, what options do we have to, to cover that need to fill the, you know, our high-speed internet access needs? And so, another part of the findings, the survey obviously is on the ground, and that's something we need to take with a grain of salt when we're looking at the public data. And so, what you see on this slide is essentially, we can grab publicly sourced data from census, you know, from nonprofits like Connected Nation, which help map broadband infrastructure and where the needs are. And so, part of our analysis is we're saying, you know, let's look at some census data, let's look for trends that stack that make it look apparent that this area has needs. It has needs because of various criteria that's known to us. You know, median household income is not always the reason why there's low broadband adoption. I think a lot of times, that's when you look at just the public data, it can be superficial. Because, and that's why the survey is so important. Essentially, when we're looking at adoption and when we do these studies, it's important because we get a look at the root cause. It's not always, they can't afford it. Sometimes it's, and then the case in Victoria, what we saw is that in these areas that seem like there's low adoption, people weren't subscribing to services. It wasn't because there wasn't available services, it wasn't because those services cost too much. And so, what, we have to look a little deeper, right? And so, when we look at it and we talk to the stakeholders and through our research, market research, it seems like the adoption issue is more of the digital illiteracy. Not knowing how much broadband can actually improve their lives or not seeing the quality of the existing services right now. You know, if you were burned before, I signed up, I had it, I had a terrible experience, I'm never paying for it again. And maybe that was a while back, and maybe the service is now better. And so, what we really saw was that when it comes to adoption like this, a lot of the traditional ISPs or internet service providers that come in, they wanna go to the areas that are good with the money and make business sense. And so, to address the adoption in these areas and get broadband to those who need it the most, a lot of the times, it's the municipality, the face that they trust, the residents, that need to be that driving force. And so, a lot of what we've seen in our study and the needs and gap analysis is that there's a, there's a root cause to this, and it's something that the municipalities and, you know, local partners have the best opportunity to address. So, based off that, we're moving into our solutions. So, the first, we have four recommendations, the first of which is a public-private partnership. And really, this, this recommendation, and we'll go into a little bit further detail on further slides, but there's, through the course of the study and also through the efforts of the broadband commission, there's already two internet service providers that are already trying to come into Victoria, which is great. Sparklight already announced that, that was made public, and there's also Fiberlight, which is a very interested provider, and there's actually a whole list of other providers that have expressed interest. So, part of that is bringing in these providers to say, you know, we want more options, we want better options. And so, one, the first recommendation is really supporting that. The more providers we have, the better services, the more competitive, the better the prices, the more they have to compete for quality of service. So, that's, that's recommendation number one is be ISP-friendly, help facilitate their, their transition here. And then also, the second one is targeted infrastructure development. And this is where, like we mentioned before, there's not as much of a business case for those ISPs to go to underserved areas because the adoption rates low. And so, they're not gonna get the return, and this is where we see the, the city being kind of that driving force in the solution. And so, there is a part, the underserved locations identified, we see that there is a unique solution there through fixed wireless and investment in broadband infrastructure. And there's a ton of funding, two of the main sources that we think are most applicable are the capital projects funds through the treasury, and there's multiple EDA funds that would support this project.
What is fixed wireless?
So, fixed wireless is essentially where you're not gonna take fiber all the way into a home or all the way into the business. It's on a wireless antenna outside the home or outside the business, and you essentially, it's kinda like Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi. But it's public Wi-Fi that's much better, it's much higher performance standards, it can meet the broadband requirements of like 100 gigabit or 100 megabit symmetrical. So, it's a very capable alternative to direct fiber.
Thank you.
The last two of those, of those recommendations, the additional resources for adoption, again, there's no funding required there, there's no gap, I should say. Really, we need to promote the federal-backed subsidy programs like the emergency broadband benefit. A lot of residents right now could be receiving $50 off their bill. All they have to do is sign up, getting the word out and being, again, that face to say, let's adopt broadband, there's, there's a lot of programs in place already, is a part of what we can do in leveraging the, you know, the response that we have from stakeholders that are interested. You know, the ISD wants to help, you know, the, a lot of the other stakeholders expressed interest, and I'm sure that's where those resources would come from to help spread that word. And then finally, promotion of regional initiatives. There's also Coastal Bend Cog and has a regional broadband loop project that is going to provide emergency management throughout the entire region. It's a, you know, out of the events of Harvey and then the mitigation money is targeted towards this initiative. And so, what we would recommend is that Victoria and Victoria County be supportive of this in the way that they can, because connecting to this network's gonna make the city more resilient and put them on that emergency management network when things do happen, which we're in coastal areas. So, that's definitely something that is a, is a real threat. So, again, we talked the public-private partnership, the recommendation one, I just wanted to highlight on the map, what we did is we looked at a middle mile, which is essentially the fiber that would go in the ground that went to all the key demand points, which by demand points, I mean hospitals, city facilities, the school districts. Essentially everywhere that we talked with stakeholders that they said, I need a good internet service, this is what that middle mile does. It gets that main fiber distribution all the way up to their doorstep and connected. So, we said, what's the cost of that? And that cost is 19 million, but that 19 million, the good thing is, through the course of the study, those two internet service providers are coming in, and they're gonna cover the majority of this because they're already saturating it. So, that's why the first recommendation is have them come in and facilitate that transition because they're gonna do a lot of what we identified as where the needs are, they're gonna build there. And so, some of the ways we can incentivize that is tax abatement, joint marketing plans, be ISP-friendly, essentially.
In your opinion, what is the likelihood that they would be willing to let other people lease fiber capacity from them?
So, the, that's the open, open access model, and it's, they're willing to, it's kind of, it's a little bit like pulling teeth, it has, there has to be a business sense, right? And so, leasing to competitors is hard, but what we've seen is that a lot of times when that open access network, which is where you have an operator that has to play nice with everyone, so there's competition. A lot of times, that kinda turns away some of the potential operators because they want the business. And so, sometimes organic competition, which we're seeing here, where Sparklight and Fiberlight are both wanting to come in here and invest in the city and the infrastructure, is a, is a great alternative. But I will say that, especially at the state level, that open access where you can kind of enforce to say, you know, I want, I want competition and I wanna facilitate it, and we'll build this oversized network to say, everyone can get on this. It really just depends on the situation and who the, the providers are that are interested and how willing they are to play with it. So, we've had those discussions with a lot of the providers, and the general consensus is, we wanna, we have a business case here, we're willing to try to play ball as much as we can, but at the end of the day, we, we have to make money and.
And one way to look at it is, you know, who ultimately owns the middle mile? And obviously, if we have a partner that is primarily interested in investing in a big chunk of it, you know, they would obviously own it, manage it. So, what role do we play in requiring or mandating that they follow this open access model? Probably very minimal. Some communities that aren't as fortunate as we are and don't have as much interest as we, as our community has are being forced to invest more into a middle mile and be more involved with the ownership and management of the middle mile. And in those instances, the cities are, you know, following that model of, because they're, for lack of a better term, desperate to get providers in.
Right, so it's like, if you're likening it to streets sometimes, if you had built a city where the city went in and built the thoroughfares and just said, okay, if you want a house, you're gonna have to go build your own residential street or whatever, and it gets built out that way, and the city actually owns the middle mile portion, that kinda makes sense. You don't like my analogy.
I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to like it, I'm trying to like the analogy.
But what, the reason I ask the question is because just that I don't.
Utilities is a better example.
But I really am so thankful that Sparklight's coming, and I'm excited about it, and I'm really pumped about it. But it's really not the middle mile that I was thinking of as far as a trunk line that runs through the city that other competitors would be drawn in to come to and run off and, and do the final mile, the last mile.
Yeah, well, and also take into account too that while competition is good, what's, what's the number, right? I mean, if organically, we're already proceeding in, in having three or four, you know, competitors, you know, is that not sufficient, right? And is it worth, you know, us getting involved to try and get up to five or six, you know, at that point, is that gonna make a difference? You know, maybe, maybe not.
Probably not.
I wanted to add something, Mayor, so basically, when we.
Can you just the mic? Thank you.
I wanted to add something, so basically, when we got started and we actually interviewed to get this project, we were actually proposing a middle mile open access network. Because at that time, without the research, that made more sense that since all these grant opportunities are there, you all can maybe build your own middle mile and invite many to come in. But going through the process we went through and meeting with every stakeholder, it evolved because what we see in Victoria is new service providers want to come into Victoria, and they wanna provide their service. Of course, it needs to make a business plan, so the way it's set up right now is where it makes a business plan, allow them to do their own, build the middle mile, and the city more focus on utilizing the grant opportunities which are out there to serve the underserved communities where it does not make, make sense for them. And if they are investing their own money, they are not open to the open access idea, unless it's the city which is putting in all the money to build it. So, so in this case, it, with two of them coming in right now and planning for this, it makes sense to allow them to just have their own. The big, another big thing is that the take rate is very important for these service providers. If it's an open access network where they feel like five, five of them have to divide up the take rate, which is basically how many demand points they can go to, it, it almost has a detrimental effect where they are running away from it. So, it seemed like for our city here, this makes more sense allowing them to come in and flourish.
Thank you.
So, along those lines, because we want that organic saturation, but, you know, what can the city do as a part of addressing the underserved? And so, what we've seen, and it has been proven, is fixed wireless is a much quicker and more economical way to deploy these networks. And so, in order to address the needs, we saw that as a good solution because it could be done quickly, and it can be done at a lower cost as well. And so, we took a look at what that might cost, and you can kinda see on the bottom left, it's around 2.6 million. And the good thing is that, of course, as mentioned, there is a ton of funding opportunities that the city now can use our study and what we've picked up to go after those applications. And essentially, the money is for broadband for specifically these situations and these scenarios. So, that's one of our recommendations is to find partners to work with to build this targeted infrastructure. And then, going into a little bit more detail on the last two recommendations, again, the additional resources for adoption, there's, again, existing staff, public libraries, schools, nonprofits that are invested, they wanna help. We wanna get the word out to enroll in subsidy programs and also develop a plan for utilizing the current resources we have at the city and other partner organizations to help address this issue, to be the face of, who's, the, the city to be the face with their partners of how they're addressing the underserved locations, which will in turn empower their residents there and see economic development effects, workforce development effects. And then, the last point again was the promotion of the regional initiatives. The, the map on the, on the slide shows what that footprint looks like, so it's a very, it's over 260, yeah, 260 miles throughout the coastal bend and into the Golden Crescent region. And so, really, the anchors of this network would be Victoria on the north side, which also is another really attractive thing for other ISPs coming in, because now you became a hub where this, you know, regional network comes through. And another benefit of this is it's, by being more regional, there's, there's places in the county that are impacted too, connection to the port, the airport, county assets. So, this also ties that into, into the need, which we did meet with the port and the airport, and they both expressed the need for that high-speed internet. But big thing there is emergency management, and Derek has already had, been in communication with Coastal Bend Cog, so that's actually already rolling, we're well aware of the project. He's well aware of what the initiative is and how we can support that, because ultimately, what that does is build a loop around Victoria, which is additional infrastructure. And so, this, this slide, I talked about return on investment, but this is really just talking about the, the gaps and the needs and gaps in broadband really exist because, like Vanita was mentioning before, there's, there's no return on investment from the private sector. And so, you know, for the city to be the ones to, to go after the available funding right now and be the face to invest in those areas, invest in, and broadband infrastructure, it's kinda similar. I know we're trying to come up with a simile there, and we went with the roads and housing, but it's also like real estate. I mean, it's, it's an investment that spurs further investment, if that makes sense. We always see broadband as an enabler, you stick broadband with transportation, it's smart transportation, creates efficiencies, you stick broadband, you know, within a commercial area or industrial area, and now you have a lot of businesses that wanna come there because they can have automated, automation in their factories that require high-speed broadband. So, really, the return on investment is, the investment in broadband infrastructure is, spurs economic development, and there's plenty of evidence to, to support that. And so, that's what we'd just like to, to touch base on, that, that is where the benefit of being involved in this and being, you know, the ones to serve the underserved is, is gonna turn those areas around and revitalize the economy.
But you're talking about, I think I'm following the, the open concept versus whatever that other concept is with the business model where people want their own. So, if the city is the one that puts in that middle mile, who. So if the city is the one that puts in that middle mile, who can, how does it get connected to a provider?
So the, the, the middle mile, the, the, what I put up here?
Or what you were just talking about, the, the city pu- putting in the structure for the, um...
The less, the fixed wireless?
Well, for the underserved communities.
We would, we would have to partner, um, we would have to partner...
So we would be picking somebody?
Well, then that somebody's already there though, right? So I mean, there are already, um, companies that are looking to invest in that infrastructure in town. We would simply have to find a way to partner with them to tell them, hey, you know, we know you're focused on this part of town.
Yes. So what would happen in this case is where there is not a business case for them to go, sir, the city will apply for the grants which are out there. The one, the big one is the capital project grant, which the, the state is applying for it right now and they're going to receive the five hundred million dollars. And if a project like this, like our project is ready, so this would be presented to them. So you'll be first in the line. So basically in, in those areas where there is no business sense, the city will apply for the grant. But once you receive the grant, you, there would be a process because we've already talked to who all are interested in this. Derek has made huge progress with this. You, the city will partner with them. So ultimately they'll build it, they'll operate it, they'll own it. And they can also apply for those additional subsidiaries like the emergency broadband where every, um, uh, uh, low-income house they, uh, serve, they can get fifty additional dollars. So ultimately you don't own that. The operator who operates it is going to own it. You're just helping get some additional funding for that operator in the area which doesn't make business sense for them.
But the city's the one that got the grant?
Yes. So...
Go ahead, Derek.
I mean, the, the, go ahead.
So a minute ago, they said that broadband's like real estate. In a number of cases where we get land, develop it, clean it up, do what we need to do, and then someone else is going to make use of that land, whether that's a shopping center, whether that's a hospital, whether it's a factory, whatever that is, then we work with them to, to move that possession.
Okay.
Same, same concept here.
Thank you. That helps.
And you're talking about the fixed wireless, right?
Talking about the middle mile.
Well...
It is. The fixed wi-, the fixed wireless solution does work with the middle mile. So for that area, we're talking about the middle mile as well as the fixed wireless solution.
What are the speeds of fixed wireless?
Okay. Yeah. So, uh, fixed wireless is, um, getting a lot better. Uh, it can definitely meet the broadband standards, depending on the mesh solution, which is essentially how much fiber do you want to put in the ground to be backhaul? Um, because you can do wireless stuff off of towers way far away, but a lot of times cities have done mesh in the past and it hasn't been successful. Fixed wireless is a different terminology. We don't like to use mesh because it refers to the, you know, the one that didn't work so well. Fixed wireless is what they used in a lot of the, the small cell kind of applications, the, um, the 5G stuff. So it's very, very capable of provi- providing, uh, gigabit speeds. Um, and symmetrical is the only thing that's a little bit harder, which means the upload and download are the same, but it can more than, um, more than meet the, the current, uh, broadband definition of twenty-five-three. Um, and it can, it can be closer to the one hundred, uh, a one hundred and twenty, uh, speeds that are required. We recommend a, a one hundred symmetrical in the study. And so fi- the fixed wireless solution that we would be recommending would meet that standard as well, if that helps. Very capable. And so, uh, and this fixed wireless, um, network of course is, is focused on the underserved, right? So, uh, I'm a big fan of not having a, putting a Band-Aid on it. We don't want to get to the minimum of twenty-five-three just because that's what the requirement is now. Uh, if, if the, if those underserved aren't adopting right now with current services, then why would we offer a similar service?
The imme-, the, the immediate fund we want to apply right now is the capital, um, cap-, projects fund. That does have a requirement of hundred and twenty. So, oh, the network we'll have to design, will have to meet that criteria.
All right. So I, I think I, I covered that. Um, what's next? Um, we would, uh, keep working. Derek's already working heavily with the Coastal Ben Cog. Um, and we've talked to Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission, uh, Connected Nation, a lot of parties that are involved in the regional project. So we would want to, uh, team and support that. And so for that emergency management network and to have that, that network go through Victoria, um, and then use our study because that's a huge purpose of it, a hundred and seven-page document of, of backup for these grants, um, for these applications. So we've done that legwork. So all it is, is essentially, um, we just need to make sure that those, uh, applications go in, um, and, and that's money on the table specifically for broadband to address the need. So we would, we would push to, to that be a next move, um, looking at the deadlines and making sure we meet those dates. And then finally, continue to work the public-private partnership for the underserved. Um, look at those local partners that we've already talked to that are willing to be the operators, um, and, and, and essentially be the ones that build that fixed wireless and are going to do the operations and maintenance, um, based off of those funds coming in from the capital project fund or EDA or wherever they end up coming from, depending on what the, those results are. Um, and that, that concludes, uh, our presentation. So again, thank you for the opportunity. And if there's any questions, um, we're, we're here to, to answer those now.
I'll just briefly add to that piece that, um, recall that funds from the Rescue Plan Act can be utilized for broadband. Um, to just keep that in mind as well as this conversation continues.
So I want to clarify one thing. When he says the capital project fund, he is not talking about Gilbert's capital project fund. There's a, there's a federal COVID bill that's going to fund state broadband programs and the states will disperse those funds. They call it the capital projects fund, COVID-nineteen capital projects fund. Just being clear that we're not spending Gilbert's money.
Yeah, I was thinking, poor Gilbert.
Yeah, he, he's not here to defend himself or fund. All right. Any further questions? Well, thank y'all for doing that study for us. I appreciate it. It's going to be very beneficial to us and hopefully will help us land some of these grants. Um, have anything else, Mr.?
No, sir.
Mr. Gooch, you're good? Three, five? All right. Uh, with that, we are adjourned.